Oh, good evening. Welcome to the Town of Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting for Wednesday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. We call the meeting to order and ask our board clerk Amy to read the legal notice.
Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and banning gatherings of more than ten people, this meeting will be conducted by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. The public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click on the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial-in number, one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine, meeting ID eight three eight six nine one zero three three six eight, pass code four five two seven zero three. Please only use dial-in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One, continued hearings. Two, twenty-one dash twenty-two, twenty-one dash twenty-three, twenty-one dash twenty-four, one sixty-eight Lexington Street LLC. Application for a special permit and site plan approval pursuant to Article Six, Section one ninety dash thirty-two of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow twenty-one unit mid-rise apartment building in combination of another use being an office use. Application for a special permit pursuant to Article Six, Section one ninety dash thirty-two dot one of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, allowing reductions and or alterations to dimensional controls which are required under Section one ninety dash thirty-two D and or Table two. The requested reductions and or alterations may include, but are not limited to, requirements relating to lot frontage and width, front, side, and rear setbacks, height, floor area ratio, building coverage, and open area. Application for a special permit pursuant oops, hold on, my phone just went crazy. Pursuant to Section one ninety dash thirty-six C of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow reductions in the requirements and or standards of for off-street parking and loading under Article seven of the Wakefield zoning bylaw. The property is shown as map forty-one, Lot Parcel zero two seven of the assessor's map and is located at five twenty-five through five twenty-seven Salem Street. Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
Continue here beeps. Okay, so just a few opening comments before we get started. So I have, as the host of the meeting, I have set a setting so that anyone can share their screen. So for each of the hearings, we would ask the applicants or the representatives to be prepared to share materials, plans, et cetera. You should have the ability to grab the screen share and share what you want. I've also allowed all participants to mute or unmute themselves. So we'd ask everyone in the public to please remain muted until the public participation portion of each hearing, in which case you can then raise your hand. There's a control in the Zoom call to do so, and I will call on you and do my best keep order and keep folks called in the order that they raise their hands. And we appreciate your patience until we get to that point in each hearing.
Dave, can I just pipe in one second? Are you sharing your screen right now or no?
Not anymore. I was sharing the agenda while you read the legal.
Okay, yeah, something's weird with my screen. I just wanted to double check. Okay, if I bounce out, I might bounce, I'll bounce back in. I'm just trying to figure out what's wrong with my screen.
Okay. So again, we'll, we'll start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance and any votes we take will also be by roll call as we've been doing for these Zoom meetings. So with that, just acknowledge your presence, Chip Tarbell. Jim McBane.
Jim's on mute.
Here.
Thank you, Amy.
Here.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Tom Lucy.
Here.
Greg McIntosh. Oh, Greg. How do you do that? Greg, do we have mic issues again? Here. Oh, thank you. And Mike Feely. Michael.
Here.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so with that, we will proceed to our agenda. Our first continued hearing.
Looks like you might need to mute a couple of people, I think. Oh, then, okay, I think it's good now.
Yeah, should just be the board members. I'll, I'll keep an eye on it once we get started here.
Okay.
Kick us off here. Okay, so our first continued hearing this evening is cases twenty-one, twelve, twenty-one, thirteen, and twenty-one, fourteen, six-ten Salem Street Wakefield LLC at six-ten Salem Street. So, Mr. McGrath, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Thank you very much. I, here on behalf of six-ten Salem Street, with me tonight is John Olgrum once again and Peter Sandors and Jim Emanuel, because one of the items that you wanted to talk about on this project tonight was landscaping features. So Jim Emanuel, our landscape architect, put together the landscaping plan. So he's prepared to present that tonight. I also think you wanted to discuss some traffic on this project. And I noticed that Lieutenant Anderson is on. So I don't know, I know when, when you ask town personnel, sometimes you want to take their matters first, Mr. Chairman. So I didn't know how you wanted me to proceed with the presentation. And that.
Okay. So board members, right, so tonight we were going to talk about, I think, continued discussion on sort of the massing and architecture. I think we wanted to make sure we were complete on that traffic and landscaping, right?
Yeah. Could I, could I share the screen for one second, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Okay. I just wanted to point out, because if this might help Lieutenant Anderson, this, this project actually went before the Traffic Advisory Committee in September, with a number of other projects at the time, five eighty-one, and this is six-ten, and then there was some stuff on two hundred Quanapawin Parkway. And the TAC, Lieutenant Anderson and Mr. Keely from VHB issued a memorandum on this, and I'd like to read it if I may. In July twenty meeting, two thousand and twenty memorandum, Hayes Engineering provided trip generation calculations for the, for the proposed thirty-unit residential development based on the Institute Transportation Association publication, Trip Generation Manual, tenth edition. VHB has reviewed the calculations and finds them appropriate for the proposed project. Based on a review of the site plan, the proposed parking supply meets zoning requirements. VHB also reviewed stopping site distance calculation provided by Hayes and agrees that adequate site distance is available at the proposed driveway. While intersection site distance ISD measurements were not provided, it appears based on a desktop review that adequate ISD would be available if the vegetation on the east side of the property is trimmed and maintained. VHB recommends trimming, trimming the overgrowth in that location and maintaining it so that it does not obstruct the driver's view looking to the east as they exit the site driveway. VHB concerns concurs with the Hayes Engineering's conclusion that additional traffic will not have a significant impact on, impact on adjacent roadways. So I just wanted to point this out that, that this was before Traffic Advisory Committee, and they have reported in writing to your board, and I'm sure maybe they'll give you some more information tonight as you may request. And also, Bill Bergeron, who prepared the report, I forgot to mention him. He's here tonight in case, in case the board had any questions of him.
From Hayes.
From Hayes. So I hope that helps, but I just did want to point out that we have been before the TAC on this already.
And what was the date that they did the traffic study?
Well, I think these were based on, on I, I, on, on trip generation manuals. But another project you're going to hear from tonight did, did do traffic generation counts. And they, and they factored in the COVID, which is, is required by the state now. And we shared that report with Bill Bergeron, so he can probably talk to you about that a little bit better than me if you, if you want to know. So that he would, you know, be more qualified to do that, as I'm sure that your consultants in the, in, in Lieutenant Anderson and Mr. Keely, if he's here, might be able to talk about that a little bit more too.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want this up on the screen? Should I remove this, Mr. Chair, or do you want me to leave it up if they need it?
Um, I want to put up the site plan if you have it. We get a visual.
Yeah, I can do that. Yep.
In the meantime, to answer your question, Amy, and the boards, the traffic impact assessment for six-ten Salem, there's a report from his engineering is dated July twentieth, two thousand and twenty.
I'd be very curious to hear about what the rules are regarding COVID and how that's factored in to their study.
Sure.
Is that, is that good? Does that help?
Yeah.
So, board members, I'm inclined to begin by asking Hayes Engineering to summarize their assessment for us. Again, we don't have to look at the entire report, but just maybe summarize some of the criteria and what they did measure and what they did use for the calculations. Then we can ask questions, and if there's anything that we would like from the PAC, we can certainly do that. Again, Lieutenant Anderson is here. And I don't know if there's anyone else from VHB as well. Does that sound reasonable, board members?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Brian.
I'm looking for Bill. Bill Bergeron, are you here? John?
Yes, I am here.
Great. So can you take it from here, Bill? Would you mind?
Yeah, the question relative to how the adjustment was made, what, what happens is there's continuous station monitoring for traffic volumes the state has. And during COVID, basically, they asked us to go back, compare it to prior years. And then, basically, what they've, what they've indicated in their directive is that we adjusted based on the monthly, normally, the way we would normally do it, you know, we adjust it by month. But also that there's a automatically a twelve percent add-on to whatever the current traffic counts are. And these counts on that five twenty-five and five twenty-seven, the report is done on nine seventeen, so the counts are recent for that. And what they found was that for the no build two thousand and twenty-seven, because we project out on all these traffic studies seven years into the future, the AM traffic would be six hundred and eighty-nine vehicle trips per day, and the PM traffic would be nine hundred and twenty-nine vehicle trips per day. And the the average daily traffic would be ten thousand five hundred and ninety-eight. So with our projected traffic increases, we have six vehicle trips increased over the existing Taylor rental use in the morning. And actually, the, there is no increase in the afternoon. So the six cars would represent less than a point nine percent increase in the AM peak hour. There would be no increase in the PM peak hour. And we projected there's actually going to be a hundred and seventeen added vehicle trips during the course of the day over and about the current use. And that on the total traffic would be a one point one percent increase. All of these are well below any requirements to do any, any mitigation for the roadway. But the actual design itself, as, as was indicated with the Traffic Advisory Board, the current frontage of this is a continuous open driveway along that entire frontage. And the sidewalk is basically flush with the roadway and the sidewalk area. So with the proposed plan that you see before you, we're going to be installing granite curbing and replacing the sidewalk along the front and limiting the access to the twenty-four-foot wide access road shown on the site plan. So it's a significant enhancement, both from a pedestrian safety concern such as the pedestrians' traffic is, but it also definitely controls and provides a more controlled access into and out of the site. We didn't do levels of service analysis for this, but the project that you're talking about, five twenty-five, five twenty-seven, they did for this, which is basically up the street, you know, probably I don't know, five hundred yards from our driveways. Their level of service was level of service B or better for all of the movements in the AM and the PM. And they actually went a step further and they actually analyzed, because they're closer to the Salem Street intersection where the lights are at Pleasure Island Road. They actually did the analysis at that intersection as well. And there was no level of service adjustments or changes for that in the two thousand and twenty-seven build. And just so you understand that, that would include the build for their project, our project, and the other project that we have up the street that was recently approved by this board. So that all those projects were included with the, the five twenty-five and the five twenty-seven project. So all of those indicate that there's minimal impact relative to the proposed traffic. And as it was indicated, our stopping site distances at our intersection site distances are excellent in this location. Roadway is basically flat. And basically, it's right across the street from our entrance into Hayes Engineering. So we have quite a bit of experience as to what the traffic conditions are relative to where this site is. I'd be happy to answer any other questions if there's anything.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Yeah. Tell me, want to go, you want me to go?
You will talk and go ahead. You might pick off mine anyways.
Okay. A couple of questions. So you said that in, they take the data from in years past to get the current data, and then they're adding the twelve percent. So kind of a two-part question. What years' data did they use for that?
It's in their report, but they used the two thousand nineteen in two thousand and, and they compared it to two thousand and twenty, just to see if there was a comparison so they could get an idea of what the COVID situation would be. But they, they actually used the traffic counts that they, they got manually onsite, you know, in September. So, so it, it's current data for that. It's just how much of an adjustment you were going to make to that. So we do the seasonal factors to increase the volumes based on what the, you know, the annual traffic is. And then the COVID situation added a twelve percent add-on to that. And I could tell you, there's not that much of a difference right now in front of Hayes Engineering compared to what it was previously. So I think that the it's overly conservative for that. In addition to that, when we're projecting out to the year two thousand and twenty-seven, which is when the full build supposedly would be fully implement, implement into the roadway system, there's also an automatic increase year by year on that over and above. So in, in addition to the twelve percent increase to get it to a supposedly new normal for current for at two thousand and twenty condition, there's like a seven percent increase compounded, you know, for that for the two thousand and twenty-seven. So the background traffic growth is supposed to be accounted for within that.
And where does the twelve percent, who came up with that data and how was that calculated?
That's a Mass DOT directive on how to adjust for COVID.
Okay, do we know what, why twelve percent? I mean, obviously, this study is behind it, but is there a kind of a brief rundown of where that number came from?
I don't, I mean, I'm just we were told by DOT to use that, so that's what we're using for the adjustment.
Okay. And then you had mentioned that one of the projects down the street was rated a B with the traffic, and then you mentioned the other, I forget which project was which, but the other one you mentioned would remain about the same. Do you happen to know what that grading is?
I, I said that when they did the five twenty-five, five twenty-seven intersection capacity analysis, they did the driveway for the new structure, and that was level of service B or better for the AM and the PM peak hours. But they also did the intersection where the light is at Salem Street and Duncan Donuts and Pleasure Island Road. And that there was a level of service C for the AM and PM peak hours with no perceptible change to the level of service with the project or without the project.
Okay. And then one last question. You mentioned about granite curving out in the front. I might have missed you say it. Did you say that there's going to be a sidewalk put out in the front across the whole building?
There's currently a concrete sidewalk along the frontage now, but it was installed flush to the pavement edge on Salem Street because the entire frontage was their access for parking for the Taylor rental store. So that will be coming out, the existing concrete sidewalk will be coming out. A new sidewalk will be put in, but it'll be elevated in the six to eight inches that it needs to be to be flush with the top of the curb.
Okay. Thank you.
That answer your question? Do you have something else?
Yeah, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Yep. So if I can jump back into, I was interested in the twelve percent too, but I guess if it's a Mass DOT directive, there's not much we can do about that. I'm a bit skeptical that twelve percent accounts for what's happening with traffic and pandemic. But I, I guess my only other question then is, you know, we heard from almost every neighbor that testified at the last hearing about concerns, especially when traffic concerns related to UPS and Kimball Lane and trucks coming in and out of there. So did you factor that into, you said you did live count, so you, you took into consideration the coming and going of the UPS trucks from that site?
The traffic counts that were done included the UPS traffic and the UPS traffic since we're, it's right out our front door. They have a, a police officer at the, at Kimball Lane to direct the traffic and let them flow, and they come out in specific times and, and, you know, when they're coming out, they're coming out one right after the other. But it's basically it's, it's a short period of time, and then they're through, and then for the rest of the day, it's, it's, it's sporadic traffic from that. And I'm in and out of the driveway three or four times a day. Never have an issue with our driveway, which is almost directly diagonally across from, from this project.
Okay, thank you.
Other board members? Hear me?
Yep, great. Okay, all right, making sure my mic works. Yeah, I just have a, a quick one. I want to understand a little bit about, I think you called it the chip trip generation under difference between a no build and a full build situation. I think you said in the morning, there'd be a difference of six, an additional six trips. And in the PM hours, zero. So with the current situation, that would mean to me that only six cars are coming in and out of there all day. I mean, there's nothing there's nothing in there right now. So am I understanding that correctly, or how, how, how are we supposed to think about that? If, if, I mean, if I even understood what you said correctly, because that doesn't seem right.
Indeed. During the AM peak hour, the IT is the standard that all traffic engineers use to predict what traffic generation is going to come from a proposed project. So in this case, it's land use code two twenty-one, which is multifamily housing. And the projections for that during the AM peak hour is that there will be three vehicles going in, six vehicles going out for a total of eleven vehicles during AM peak hour. In the evening peak hour, there'd be eight vehicles going in and five vehicles going out for a total of thirteen vehicles. The the existing structures is categorized as IT land use code eight sixteen, which is basically a hardware paint store building. And that would generate in the morning, three vehicles in during the peak hour, two vehicles out for a total of five. So between the eleven for the new project and the five for the existing, there's a net increase of the traffic of six cars in the morning. And likewise, in the afternoon, the hardware store would have six vehicles in, seven vehicles out for thirteen vehicles, which equals the thirteen vehicles that the proposed project would generate. So there's a net change there of zero. During the day, the hardware store would only generate about forty-six vehicles. The multifamily housing would generate about a hundred and sixty-three. So that's why we end up with the increase of a hundred and seventeen vehicles during the course of the day. But typically, the, the problem times of the day of the AM, the PM peak hours, when the adjacent street traffic is the highest. And under those conditions, we're still operating at a level of service B or better. A being the best and B being good. It's not untypical to have a level of service of D for urban settings. So, well, well, there's, there's no indication that's going to be any kind of a traffic issue right by this.
But just to get a, a real apples-to-apples comparison of what the difference would be, would would probably make sense to just think of nothing. I, I understand that there used to be, you know, traffic generated, but there's nothing generated there now. So if we're trying to understand how the difference will be affected between, you know, what the new project would do and today.
Yeah, it's still, it's still, instead of point nine percent, it might be one point five percent. And, you know, for the, for the afternoon, it, it's going to be maybe about one point two percent. And for the total daily traffic, it may be go to one point seven percent. Anything less than five percent is even considered to be any kind of an impact at all. And this is certainly well below that.
Bill, what are the numbers in that ratio, the, when you're talking point seven, point nine, one point?
That was the, that was the, the six changed vehicles over the AM peak hour, which was the six hundred and eighty-nine vehicles. So that ends up being a point nine. And the
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Stop, stop. I'm sorry, you just go a little fast for the brain here at night. Six hundred and eighty-nine is total trips of cars in that corridor over the course of a day?
No, no, in the peak hour.
Six hundred and eighty-nine?
Cars go by that site in the peak hour.
Oh, in the peak hour.
And we're adding six vehicles to it.
I think we're more than six. We have to take into consideration, like Greg said, there's nothing coming out of there right now. So it's six plus whatever would be there technically if it was a
Right. So if you doubled it and said it was twelve, that's one point, one point eight percent.
Okay, so that's twelve divided by six hundred and eighty-nine. That's where you're getting that ratio.
Yeah.
Okay. And in the evening, you gave a similar number. Again, there's the thirteen new trips over zero, which is there today. I, I, and my question was along the same line. Sorry, Greg, that you know, the number seemed reasonable to me again for thirty units, because we've seen these in other projects, going in and out of peak hours, doesn't seem like a huge change. But when you see a hundred and seventeen trips total throughout the day, again, it's throughout the entire day. But then the assessment is it's a minimal impact. So just trying to understand it's the level of service B. If it was going from B to C or B to D, then it wouldn't be a minimal impact, right? If it was changing, they're degrading the level of service to a whole nother category, it would be a different conversation. Is that a fair assessment?
That's correct. But I mean, the hundred and sixty-three vehicles, assuming there's no impact from the existing structure, that's got to be divided by ten thousand five hundred and ninety-eight. So again, you're going to be one point five percent or something like that. So it's, it's really not a significant increase.
Again, the ten thousand is what now?
Ten thousand, ten thousand five hundred and ninety-eight vehicles go by this driveway or projected to go by this driveway at the full build.
In a twenty-four-hour span, correct?
Yes.
At the full build, meaning a couple of years from now, not twenty twenty-seven.
We projected out to twenty twenty-seven to account for everything else happening.
Oh, okay.
That's standard practice with the Mass DOT.
Okay.
When you say everything else happening, does that mean this project plus five twenty-five?
It's this, it's this project, five twenty-five. The other project that we have where the health, health center is and assuming that there's a, after add all of that stuff up and add it to the existing traffic, then you add one percent add to add all of that stuff up and add it to the existing traffic, then you add one percent over and above that per year compounded for seven years. So those are the numbers that you can that we're projecting you're going to see in two thousand twenty-seven.
So one percent per year. So by that point, it's seven percent?
Well, it's compounded, so it's a little bit more than seven percent.
Okay, so you had said anything you said below five percent wouldn't be de minimis, I mean, I'm sorry, wouldn't be a lot. So but seven percent now it seems like we're getting up higher in the percentage with the
That's that's just increasing the background traffic.
Okay.
That's just the traffic that's on the street that's not related to the project, just to account for growth that happens in the area. We increased the traffic that we obtained in two thousand twenty and assume in two thousand twenty-one, it's going to be at least one percent higher and so on till you get to two thousand twenty-seven. Has nothing to do with what we're talking about here for the site generated traffic. The site generated traffic is going to be basically a one point five percent total increase, a total part of the of the traffic.
Okay. I mean, if I'm just throwing things out there. So if we are anticipating, you know, say a little over seven percent traffic, you know, around the whole area, not just this project, but we have to assume, I guess, that there's if there's going to be more cars on the road, potentially more cars are going to be coming from this area, maybe? From this project? Is that safe to say?
No, the IT standards, the the traffic generation for this project now, if it was operating or seven years from now or ten years from now, the IT standards are for projects that are already constructed. So once it's constructed, just like a single family house, it's going to be the same traffic year after year.
Okay.
Okay. Any other board members? And sorry, Greg, I I kind of interjected in your line of question. Did you have anything else as well? Okay. Right. So these are some of the things that come up, I think, from some of the comments before, just trying to understand the increase in volume. So I think we've heard that. The traffic patterns were observed again according to the report in July, which again, in the middle of a pandemic, obviously, traffic volumes were going to be lower. They made adjustments. But did I also hear you say there were actual measurements taken in September after this report was given to us?
The re the report is the one for five twenty-seven that's coming before you. The other ones did the actual traffic counts. Because the traffic generation from this project is so minor in nature compared to the traffic. When we went to Traffic Advisory Board, they agreed that because it was such a de minimis traffic increase that it didn't warrant doing a full-blown traffic study for this because it just it just doesn't warrant it because VHB agreed to, you know, we're talking about maybe a one or a one point eight percent increase in the peak hours. And that is does not rise to the level of requiring a further study.
Okay, I misunderstood. You were referring to the other project that we haven't even opened yet, but we keep talking about. But not for this. Okay. So that was just something else I I noted in the report and I think maybe it may have come up about. You know, if sometimes these projects do look at actual trip generation, you know, and they measure things in real time. At a certain time, it was potentially done visually in July, and that was in the middle of a pandemic. And we're just contemplating that, you know, we've approved one. We're now hearing this project and there's potentially another one that we're yet to open. So again, the compounding effect, but I think you've you've addressed some of that as well. I think that's where the some of the previous questions were coming from. So with that, any other board member have a comment or question? And then I can open it up to Lieutenant Anderson. See if he wants to add anything. Okay, Lieutenant Anderson, welcome to to the meeting. Appreciate you making the time to join us.
Hi, Mr. Chair. Thank you for having me. So first and foremost, I'd like to encourage anybody to come to our traffic advisory meetings, especially now that we're we're having them through Zoom. It's just as easy as attending your meetings as well. We can kind of answer some of these questions about trip generations, site stopping distance, what that all means. A lot of times we have we have the firm there to present and they can speak with the representative directly during public participation, ask some of those questions. And it's definitely a learning experience for the public to see what goes into a traffic study and you know, what the impact's going to be. But as far as this particular development at six ten Salem Street, I think Mr. Berger was right. It's it was really a the size and scope of this project and what it would mean for that area was very minimal. What we what we will get out of it is improvements as far as pedestrian safety with a raised granite curbing there that doesn't exist. We look at available parking spaces, which meets or exceeds in this case. Another big big part that we take a look at is vehicles entering and exiting and how that intersection of the driveway is as far as sightline visibility. And in this particular case, like Mr. Berger said, it's it it really exceeds what what's recommended for that area. There's good sightline visibility. The area itself at Salem Pleasure Island Road is controlled by an adaptive traffic signal system. So when you come off of one twenty-eight onto Audubon Road, when you come up to Pleasure Island Road, Salem Street over toward Montrose, at one point, those signals were not adaptive and they they relied on older technology, but now they are adaptive to the traffic patterns. And I think that helps any development in this area be able to effectively manage the traffic, including the traffic that comes out of UPS and Kimball Lane. And that's definitely a good question, you know, about all the the traffic that comes out of UPS there. They have to take a left. I'm not quite sure how Linfield got that one by, but they they did it and the traffic comes into Wakefield. And I'll tell you that it it did. It it caused a little bit of congestion at first before we had the adaptive signals. They didn't have a police detail there at that time. I don't think they had their trucks going out in different waves. But now it's if you drive through there during the day, you'll see a lot of brown trucks going through, but the intersection can accommodate it. And, you know, to your point, Mr. Chair, as far as, you know, what the compounding effect is for some of these projects, traffic advisory looks at these proposed projects, just like the Board of Appeals does. You know, what impact is it going to have now that we've added another development potentially to the area? And it could be something that impacts traffic negatively, or it could be if we have two or three developments and we have improvements to things like sidewalks in the area, ADA accessible ramps and things like that, that could be a benefit. So just like you folks do, we look at the same things and we'll be looking at this next traffic impact assessment for the other development that we've been speaking about that's coming before you tonight. We'll definitely look at that. That has some live traffic studies and, you know, we'll see what what the committee thinks. But I have I have Matt Keely with us tonight. If you have any questions for him, so he he's the one that wrote the the memo on behalf of Traffic Advisory. And what we do is as a committee, we look at it from a bunch of different perspectives. So I'm the Chair of Traffic Advisory, but I'm the Lieutenant in charge of traffic enforcement. So I look at it from that perspective, from a police perspective. We look at it from the Disability Commission's perspective as far as handicap accessibility. We have members of the public on the board. We have a town engineer on the board as well as VHB's Matt Keely, who kind of looks at it from a neutral perspective of, you know, does this traffic impact assessment make sense? You know, in his professional experience. And in this particular one, it it really doesn't have a major impact. But we'll be looking at the other developments closely to see what their studies say. And depending on, you know, the size and scope of those projects, you know, together, are they going to make a big impact or not? So we'll definitely be looking at that. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think Matt Keely is probably in a a better position to explain his review of their study, because that's what he does for us as a town and VHB is they're a large firm. They're an excellent firm and Matt's been with us for many, many years on Traffic Advisory. So he gives us an honest initial opinion on what's presented before us.
Okay, thank you very much for that. And welcome, Matt. I know you've been before the board before. And I imagine, again, one of the things you would provide as a peer review and a member of the TAC is from your professional opinion, if there was some discrepancy or incorrect assumption or some sort of flaw with the analysis done by the applicant, that that would have been something you would have seen or discussed at a TAC meeting. And but again, your memo, which Mr. McGreal showed up front, basically summarized that you understood what they did and agreed with their recommendations and their assessment, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay. Is there anything else you would like to add on top of?
No, I I think I think I should just at least acknowledge that, you know, the questions that were asked of Mr. Bergeron and and his answers, or I I would agree with his answers. I don't really have anything to comment on additionally. And like we've been talking about, this is not a huge traffic generator. So I think our focus then shifts towards safety and looking at the site distance and site access. And as has been said already, there's definitely improvements there with the curbing and the, you know, just sort of cleaning up that wide pavement area, you know, visually, that's going to that's going to improve things for cars on Salem Street. They're going to be able to sort of see a more defined access pattern there. So I think overall, the, you know, the site access is an improvement over the existing conditions. Like I said, you know, if there's any vegetation that could impede sightlines, that should be maintained. I also know you said that you're going to be reviewing the landscape plan today. I haven't seen a landscape plan, but as is customary, we would just make sure, want to make sure that there's no, you know, tall shrubs or anything like that. That would be placed within the site triangle from from the site driveway.
Okay. Thank you for that. Okay.
I ask one question to Matt.
Sure.
Matt Chip Tarbell. Quick question for you. You know, we often along with sidewalks, try to get tree scape, you know, streetscape going. How far back or what's your opinion on trees along the roadway? What what are your thoughts on that? And that's a general comment, not that does nothing to do with this particular project?
Sure. So like I mentioned a second ago, I I mentioned the site triangle. So what the site triangle is the standard way we measure site distance is we go fourteen and a half feet back from the edge of the traveled way. So basically, the edge of Salem Street, go fourteen feet back. That's where a driver's eye would be. And then the requirement for a site distance is, you know, it's calculated with a formula from the ASHTO design manual. So you would draw a line from the driver's eye to that distance in the street and you just wouldn't want anything to be in that triangle that would obstruct you. A street tree, you know, you know, it it may be okay if that's in there because, you know, it might be, you know, a four inch tree or a six inch tree, which we would consider a point obstruction where, you know, you could sort of just look, you know, look around it and it wouldn't really impede your visibility of oncoming traffic. But we wouldn't want, you know, a big, a big shrub in there that would completely block you out.
Great, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay. So I'm wondering, normally, we would get to the other aspects of the of our agenda on this site and then enough the public testimony, but I'm wondering in the interest of these special guests, board members, whether we open it up now and just specifically see if there's anyone who has a comment or question about traffic? Because then we can move on to landscaping and I don't know, again, if it might tie back into traffic, but we can hear, you know, be mindful of what's been heard from the engineers here. But does that sound reasonable?
I concur.
Yeah, yeah, if they keep it to traffic, then yeah.
Because we might spend a little while on the other topics and it just keeps them here. So okay, so let's proceed with that. So with that, I'm going to get my participant list up here. So we'll open up to public testimony on traffic and parking specifically, okay? Because we're going to get to landscaping and other aspects after this. But while we have these guests here, we will entertain questions again, and I will try to do them in the order I see them. I see Erin Cook first. So again, for the record, if you would just state your name and address for the record and then.
Hi, again. My name is Erin. My mom wanted to ask a question first and then I will ask after, but we're at six, Jessica Lane.
Okay.
Okay, so I want to give you, her name is Janine, then I'll come back.
Hi, I have a couple of questions. What time on July twentieth was the traffic study done?
It was done twenty-four hours. It was in in the peak hours are selected by fifteen minute increments and the the four fifteen minute increments that provide them the largest peak hour is the one that's selected both in the morning peak hour and then the evening peak hour.
And how is it done? Is it a is it a visual count or are there meters put in?
There's automatic meters that were placed.
Across the the road?
Across the road.
Okay. First of all, you know, the one thing I will agree with you is that there is a police detail trucks exiting UPS. What I will not agree with you with is the purpose of those truck, the detail. The purpose of the detail is to stop traffic on Salem Street, allowing all of the UPS trucks, which is like a convoy, to exit UPS so they don't get behind in their schedule. So that is causing a major issue because Salem Street in both ways is stopped for extended length of time. So that creates a problem. I think that during the pandemic, I really don't think it's fair to the the residents in the area that this was done. You didn't do it on a day where there was school buses, where there was traffic trucks. In the past month, there were two accidents which stopped traffic going either way. There were trucks that either hit poles or, but it was completely stopped. You know, I'm I'm not a traffic engineer, but, you know, I think that your net increase is unrealistic. You can't assume how many people are going to be in those buildings. If you have thirty apartments, I don't know about you, but there's four cars in my family. So let's average it out and say two. That's sixty cars. You haven't brought up the off-street parking.
I'm going to bring up.
Walton Street, which is the closest street that runs off of Salem to this building, is virtually the only entrance and exit to the neighborhood. I went out the other day with my tape measure and I measured the width of the street, which was twenty-five feet. I parked my husband's car on one side and mine the other, and we don't have trucks. And it totaled twelve feet, which left thirteen, less than thirteen feet. The average width of a fire truck is eleven point eleven feet, six inches. There is absolutely no way that if the off-street parking, if people go on Walton Street and park on both sides, that any emergency vehicles are going to be able to access the neighborhood. We didn't get a delivery the other day before all this is happening because a truck couldn't get up the street. I talk to my trashmen all the time. Now they're having difficult getting up a difficult time getting up the street. It's just a total mess.
She stole my question, but I want to just kind of jump off of that. So I know two of the developments, I think it's six ten and then six, no, five twenty-five, I think the number is correct. They were asking a reduction in off-street parking. So my concern is and my question is, if they do that hypothetically speaking, where would these cars go? If you go, like I said, I'm on Jessica, but if you go in that surrounding area, you have Salem Street, you have Montrose Ave, you have Edgewater, Pleasure Island. Within a walking distance, there's nowhere to park besides Walton. And I'm not saying everyone's going to park in there, but I'm just saying if you're asking for a reduction or if there's more cars than allotted parking spaces, that's my concern. I'm kind of starting with my question is I'm concerned that people are going to start parking there or guests is going to start parking there and God forbid it was a medical emergency or if there's snow and a plow needs to get through. A fire, I don't know, hopefully not. I had my Amazon packaging to get through a couple of weeks ago, but that's my concern is the safety. So that's one thing. I know it's not as far as Salem Street traffic, but coming into my neighborhood, like we've said, and I'm not going to be redundant, we have one entrance and one exit. But coming into my neighborhood, and like we've said, and I'm not going to be redundant, we have one entrance and one exit. And when you get two cars on both sides of Walton, it's very difficult to navigate. And you know, I have an equinox, but if you have a truck and then you got snow to it and you've got a new driver who can't park next to the curb, it's just a recipe for disaster. So that's my concern. I know it's been other concerns. So that's mine. And I'll be back, Janine, but they have other people that.
Okay, I know. You talk about a traffic study. I don't know if you can see this picture. It was a picture that was taken as we were exiting Walton Street the other day. And this is, I don't know if you can see it, the convoy of UPS trucks leaving the facility, taking a left because they can't go through Linfield, accessing one twenty-eight. So, you know, and all due respect.
We're still a little.
I I just don't get what this traffic study is because obviously they're not seeing what we're seeing. We live here. We don't work across the street and look out the window and say, oh, there's no traffic. Okay, I know there's other people that want to talk.
Thank you.
Okay, well, you put a lot out there.
Sorry, you know, we apologize.
Well, I'm just not sure what what we can respond to that with. Again, we want to separate out five twenty-seven because we haven't even opened it yet. And that really, again.
Yeah, it's just hard because I know like we were talking about six ten, but they're all coming at once and it's just, it's in such a close proximity. These of these developments, sorry, I took the video off, these developments. It's just a concern. So it's just something we thought we should bring up. So I'm gonna stop talking to someone else. Can you talk?
Mister Chairman.
Yes, true.
The point on asking for a release of reduced parking was addressed at the last meeting. I think Mr. McGreal did a great job with it saying, you know, sometimes at the beginning of the project, they ask for it even though they don't need it. I know six ten has extra parking beyond beyond the requirement. So my bet would be even though they need it, they won't be granted any, even though they may have requested it. It's part of like if we said we don't like any of the parking in front of the building, get rid of it all. Well, then they would need to have reduced parking, but we're not going to say that. So I don't think the fact that there as Mr. McGreal explained in the last meeting, even though they're requesting it, let's look at the number of spaces they're providing. The request is is, I guess I should say, not accurate because I don't think it will come into play.
Well, they applied for it in case they needed it, but again, at this point, it doesn't seem like we're going down that path. But and and.
Correct. So people need to remember that.
Yeah.
The other part of that is is we're we're not settled on the number of units either. So that affects parking as well.
Right. Well, for the number of units currently there, thirty as proposed. They had adequate parking that meets the bylaw, right?
Have more than adequate parking.
Right. So again, it's it's unknown whether any additional cars, visitors, whatever may off attempt to park in these other side streets, which would be unfortunate, but it's again, there's a reason why the bylaws written the way it is and that these calculations take into account. Some families have one, some have two, that some have visitors, there's visitor parking. And it it tends not to be an issue in reality once it's all built. But again, each project and depending on where, what area it's in could vary. But at any rate, why don't we move on? Brown Delavope is, I think, the next hand up.
Hi, Brown Delavope, eight Cyrus Street. Thanks. A lot of my questions were already answered. Everyone was very thorough and I I appreciate that. For six ten, all right, so you, how many parking spaces will be provided?
John Ogan, could you please answer Ms. Delavope's question?
Yeah, sorry. The, we're providing fifty-five parking spaces based on the required parking calculations. Forty-six would be required.
Right. And you're you're providing fifty-five?
Correct.
Okay, now someone just said that the number of units has not been established. How can we do traffic studies and start this product process if we if we don't know how many units are going to be involved?
Well, the studies are initially done by the applicant based on what they're originally proposing, which was thirty units. I think Ms. McBane was saying, we're not done assessing the overall mass and architecture. And so I don't know that the numbers are going to go up, but they may go down. Before we're all said and done. But they they originally applied with an initial design and and that study was done based on that.
Again, that would be worst case scenario. So it's easy to do the studies on worst case scenario or current application.
Right, right. Okay. And I know there was a little bit of talk. I know, I know one of the other projects has has not even come up before you, the five twenty-five, five twenty-seven, you know, and traffic, traffic studies are are fine. And the book, book projections are really only a base and we know that. And as a couple of other people said that you know, reality is often very, very different and we don't find out what that reality is until the project's been approved and built. And then then we end up with what we see in town, which is, you know, congestion and and traffic. And so we're looking again at the cumulative, and I know you guys can't do that when you're looking at one particular project, but it's really great, great something to keep in mind. So if we have thirty units. If I understood completely, is someone saying that there's only six vehicles are leaving in the morning?
That's correct. The 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 net change was six vehicles. There's actually expected to be three vehicles going in during the peak hour and eight vehicles going out during the peak hour.
Again, during an hour. But that's a projection based on whatever, hundreds or thousands of projects that have actually been built and that goes into this model, right? And so it's just over the course of an hour. So it will vary throughout the day, but they're measuring those peak hours.
Right. So I was talking about a peak, peak hour i- in the morning. I think if you have thirty units, only six people are coming out, that's not, that doesn't sound right to me. How can that be accurate?
Eight in in a single hour. Not everyone leaves their house at the same time, I imagine. They could be, they could be leaving at seven, six to seven, seven to eight, eight to nine. Right? Not everyone goes to work at the same time.
Right.
Second shift. So I mean, again, it's over one peak hour. And again, over the course of the day, they said there'd be a hundred and seventeen more trips in and out of the entire site throughout the twenty-four hours.
Okay, thank you. And and I'm sorry, it it went from which service B, C, D to what service?
The level of service for the five twenty-five project up the street, which is basically the same as what we would experience here, was a level of service B or A for the turning movements in and out during the AM and the PM peak hours. And that was with the projected traffic up through and including two thousand and twenty-seven, which included this project that we're talking about now, the project where the the fitness center is and including their other project. And it also included, as I explained, a one percent increase per year from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty to account for other traffic that may be in the surrounding area, they would use this.
Okay, so so am I to understand then from that, that the the T A C and the V H B, the traffic studies were done in consideration of the other two residential developments that are coming on on Salem Street? Or were they all done independent of each other?
The five twenty-five, five twenty-seven project includes the five, the six-ten project as well as the the one at the Health Club. It's right in the report.
Okay, and the numbers, but the numbers that.
Three projects were constructed.
Okay, so but the the numbers that that were mentioned tonight in regards to to six-ten Salem. Do those, do those reflect any of the other projects? That was what I'm saying. Or is this just numbers to this specific site?
The the numbers in and out of the site are immaterial to the other projects because it's in and out of the site. The, the, the thing that changes is the traffic on Salem Street.
Right.
Where we go out to. And so the numbers I gave you were what the projected numbers are going to be on Salem Street for the constructed period. And for the sake of traffic studies, we projected out seven years. So the buildings that constructed, traffic patterns get get done. And basically, by seven years out, you're supposed to be normalized.
So for, so at seven years out, we're looking at ten thousand five hundred ninety-eight, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and what are we looking at now?
Nine thou, almost, almost ten thousand, it's nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-five.
Now.
With no, with no projects.
With no projects.
There's none have been built.
Exactly, yeah, I understand. Okay, thank you very, very much. I appreciate all this information.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, I believe, is Kim McDonald. I'll try to unmute you here. You should be able to unmute yourself.
I apologize. I should know this by now to unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. Chair and good evening, members of the board. I'll be quick. I'm at ten Old Colony Drive, which is right off of Walton Street. And I understand what Mr. Tarbell said about this being like a worst case scenario in terms of the parking, the parking variance approval. But as Mr. Bergeron said, there are five hundred yards between the two projects. In addition, we are right, Walton Street and the big streets off of it are right next to those. So I think our big concern here is we're thinking worst case scenario and our concern is allowing for a variance when the zoning bylaws allow for what is it? I think it's two two vehicles for a three-bedroom plus or one point five vehicles for two bedrooms or less is concerning to us. I think that if you've ever driven down Walton, you know that the way the cars park, it's already a tight fit getting down the street as Ms. Cook had already said. And I think we just want to or I just want to express my concern that taking a, well, worst case scenario approach is tough for us because we're looking at three develop, three new developments, which are all looking for variances in parking and worst case, they all need it and that's problematic for us. So I just wanted to express that and let you guys know that we're thinking of this in a holistic approach and we're trying to sort of make sure that our neighborhood that only has one entrance and exit isn't sort of filled with cars. So that's, I just wanted to bring that up and let you guys know. Thank you for your time.
Um, so Brian, I, again, I I think, Chip, we tried to state it, but I don't know, maybe, maybe you or your team can, because we, you're not requesting variances for parking. You, the the one that we approved already had adequate parking for the number of units. This one, as presented and shown on the screen, if it were to go through, wouldn't need a variance for parking. It has enough. It has more than enough. And again, we haven't even opened five twenty-seven. I don't know what that might be requesting, but we'll get to that later. So is there anything else you'd like to add?
If I could, and thank you, Mr. Chair and Ms. McDonald, I very much respect the concern of the neighbors in that regard. And as Mr. Tarbell had alluded to, the relief that we requested under one ninety thirty-six C related to parking requirements, the way it's labeled is somewhat deceptive. One of the things that could be granted pursuant to that would be a reduction in the number of required parking spaces for a project. That could be requested. We're not requesting that. We won't request that. I'll put that right on the table now. We we would not go under the required number of spaces. What that section also allows is if the board deemed appropriate would be to give other relief in aspects related to parking, such as the required parking setbacks from property lines or from buildings or from aisle width or from a landscape buffer. And as I had stated at the last meeting, perhaps you weren't here. We often apply for that, even if we don't see that we need it. Because sometimes as the project evolves through the hearing process, the board will require certain parking spaces to be shifted over that would trigger the need for the relief during the process. But we never contemplated that we would go below the number of required parking spaces for this project and any of the projects I can speak for. And we would wouldn't ask for that. Quite frankly, the parking wouldn't work for the project if that happened in this area. And we would be, I would know better because I would know that there's no way going before the board quite often that they wouldn't grant it. So the number of parking spaces for these projects will be at the requirement or higher. And this project, I think, is nine spaces higher than what is required. That's what we're trying to do. So it's a good question and I hope that gives you some clarification or some comfort.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification, Mr. McGreal. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. I see Shane McCarthy with a hand up.
Yes, Doctor, can you guys see and hear me?
Yes, we can.
Correct. Wonderful. So Shane McCarthy, I'm at fourteen Old Colony Drive. And I guess mine would mirror some of the other concerns that were brought up previously. And I'm not sure if this was mentioned in a previous meeting as well. Is this the same owner as the other buildings that are near these? So the other apartment complexes that touch this parcel of land or no? Is this the same owner?
No.
Okay, so it's a separate owner. Okay. So and I know this was brought up previously as well. So, you know, we we crunch numbers. We look at variations in the numbers. However, when it comes to reality, we find a different outcome. So we, and I, obviously, I, this, these other apartments went up before I moved here. But I can tell you that there's not enough in the other apartment complexes. I can count at least two cars that park on Walton Street as a result of not enough parking. And I don't know if they charge for parking in the other areas or not. You know, that that are currently here. So I, we just don't want to see that happen again. You know, and they they just happen to be, I mean, there's there's one that just is a is a white truck. So again, this is a truck that is on the road, it seems like twenty-four, seven, and they and they don't live on Walton Street. So again, I just want that to be taken into consideration. As was mentioned before, for concerns for emergency vehicles, for plows, just for us in general, right? So when we're coming out of the street, more often than not, you have to pull over because only one car can get by if they're parked just on one side. So a possible solution may be, you know, maybe if if we know that no one will have to park there, then maybe we can institute resident parking. So only people that live on Walton Street can park on Walton Street. So that may be a solution that would, you know, ease our fears as well. And I'm I'm not sure if that's something that could be taken into consideration.
That sounds like an excellent conversation to have at the T A C. Because they, Lieutenant Anderson can speak to that. I mean, that, you know, different traffic and parking. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, are they still on the call or no?
I am.
Oh, great.
So, Mr. McCarthy, that's an issue that comes up quite a bit with traffic advisory and I can tell you, there's really only one street that has true resident parking and that's Armory Street. The reason for that was with the redesign of the Galton Middle School. If we did like a one or two hour parking restriction there, it wouldn't help because parents are only lined up for less than an hour to pick up their kids. But the issue with that is it's literally just resident parking. So you can't have a visitor park in front of your house and that creates quite a bit of an issue. And as of right now, the town has not approved visitor passes or anything like that. What we do have is we have a resident parking permit system to exempt residents from areas of town where we see commuters trying to park. So on the west side specifically, we have commuters that will park in residential neighborhoods and take the train. And so those have always been either one or two hour parking spots because of that. And more recently, we've been able to get resident parking permits approved. And all that does is exempt residents from parking for longer than the one or two hour restriction. But I would say it'd probably be pretty difficult to everybody would basically want resident parking for their street. But I can't say that it would be impossible if there was an issue and something became an issue with your street, we would definitely hear your concern and see what we could do to help alleviate it. The short answer for parking is nobody has the right to on-street parking. So the town is free to do as they see fit with input from the public to determine what happens with our roadways in terms of parking. So what could be there today might be gone tomorrow, right? So that's, that's kind of the way it is. But if there is any type of adverse impact to your neighborhood, I would definitely look into trying to resolve that for you because that's what we do.
Lieutenant?
Yes, sir.
Um, question would be, if in fact, they have this problem where in fact, they get people parking on both sides, couldn't a certain distance down the street be one?
couldn't a certain distance down the street be one-side parking only? So that, so that they don't end up with this problem?
Sure, and that's something that we would, uh, we would typically, uh, uh, look at at a traffic advisory meeting. We would have, uh, one of our two engineers look at and measure actual roadway widths and see, um, exactly how, how wide the roads are and, uh, what the current parking situation is. So that's something that we could definitely do if there was an issue.
And the other, the other one that came up with the UPS trucks and the like, um, I think I'm just gonna suggest that maybe the neighborhood needs to talk to you guys about the strategy down there so they understand what's going on. Because if, you know, there's obviously a lot of concern and has been for a long time. And if the strategy is not working in their mind, then maybe there's a different strategy you guys can all work out.
Is, strategy as far as?
As far as relieving the traffic on the street and allowing UPS to get out at certain, certain hours or cer- a certain amount of trucks, and then let the traffic flow for a while or whatever.
Right, so unfortunately for that, it's all in Linfield. Um, so the details of Linfield, uh, the trucks are exiting from Linfield. So as much as I may agree with, uh, with some of that, um, unfortunately, I, and it's, uh, I don't know, makes me shake my head. I'm not quite sure how they pay taxes to Linfield and they can't take a, a right into, into the rest of Linfield and they have to take a left, uh, but somehow they get that approved. That's, uh, that's very, uh, very interesting. But, uh, the detail that they hire, where they are, it's all in Linfield. It might be, uh, it might be some of the residents want to, uh, present to, uh, Linfield at one of their town meetings, but, uh, you know, uh, I can tell you that things have have gotten better with the adaptive signals. And that's not to say I've heard a couple of residents talking about how obviously, if you're gonna have, you know, a, a bunch of UPS trucks coming out at the same time, it's, it's gonna congest the area. But when we're looking at intersections and, uh, how it affects that, um, further down the road on Salem Street by, uh, Pleasure Island Road, the adaptive signals have definitely helped, uh, but they're, they're coming into Wakefield, whether, I guess, whether we like it or not.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
No, and, and thank you as well. I, I appreciate that. So just to confirm if I'm hearing it correctly, you know, it, once these are built, if we find that it does become an issue, it's, it, um, it's still something we could address later on. It's not, you know, sorry, they're built too late, uh, type of approach, correct?
As far as traffic advisory is concerned, uh, you can present anything to us at any time. Uh, it doesn't matter whether it has to do with the project or not. If there's something that's changed, uh, in your neighborhood, we'll definitely take a look at it.
Great. No, thank you very much. Thanks for hearing our concerns. And I, I just, to also bring up, I think maybe why there's some confusion on variance. I, we did see it on the agenda for tonight, so I believe that might be why, and maybe not pertaining to this particular project. But it did mention, I think, towards the bottom about a parking variance. So that might be why there's some confusion, but, um, you know, again, I, I thank you for, uh, your time in, in hearing us and, uh, you know, we, we certainly is, is living here. We, we do want to see this go seamless, and we do hope that there's no impact to our neighborhood. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm just scrolling the list of participants. I see no other hands up. Last call on this topic. Okay, so we'll close it to public testimony. Um, back to the board. Any final comments or questions before we kind of close on this one and, and move on, and, and our special guest can stay if they wish, or or, uh, log off. Yes?
Hello, I, I just had a couple of at questions that I wanted to ask.
Okay.
Susan Wetmore, twelve Sunset Drive.
Okay.
Um, I was just wondering, when they do a traffic study, what do they consider A M P peak hour and P M peak hour?
It's, the, the counts are taken, uh, if it, if you're typically just looking for the A M and the P M peak hour, what we do is we go from basically seven in the morning to nine, and typically within that range, and we're taking, taking counts every fifteen minutes. So the four minute, four fifteen-minute increments that produce the largest peak out, peak hour volume is what we use. So it's not like it's, you know, it could be, uh, seven forty-five to eight forty-five, eight fifteen to nine fifteen. So it's
Right, so you're looking at that range when you talk about a, when you do it.
Yes, but in this particular case, it was a twenty-four-hour count over several days, and it was the worst hour in the morning, the worst hour in the afternoon over the seven-day, over the several-day period.
Oh, so it can be different with every time you do a, um, account like that?
We just, well, we, we, we try to verify to make sure we're getting some consistent re, uh, results.
I, I'm, that you think the A M peak that they're talking about for this was sometime between seven and nine. What would you consider the P M peak to look at?
Typically, we would look between four and six as the peak hour for that. But when you have the benefit of a twenty-four-hour count, if there's, uh, higher traffic that happens, maybe six to, you know, five thirty to six thirty, it would show up and we would pick that up, and then we would use that as the peak hour.
Okay. Um, and as far as parking spaces right now, you have the amount that's required, which, i- if that, as this project goes on, if we felt, um, that it would be more than that, we'd have an, an opportunity to discuss it or hear about a question it anyway. My only other question was, and I know we're not talking about five twenty-five, but talking about traffic, it was brought in that for that property, there was an actual trip generation done. Could you tell me the date that was done? You said September something?
The traffic report that's been submitted to the town is dated September seventeenth.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Now we'll close with the public testimony on traffic. Back to the board. Anything else, board members? Same, none, pink heads, okay? All right, well, thank you, um, Mr. Bergeron, Lieutenant Anderson, Mr. Keely, appreciate your time and joining us this evening. Again, you're free to stay if you're interested, but, uh, if not, um, we, we thank you again for your time and, uh, have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, Brian, I guess back to you. Um, the next topic we want to try to get to this evening.
Yeah, I'll, I'll leave that up to board. So what we have to go over here is we have a few things to present. Um, there's been some changes in the site plan and architectural plans, uh, as requested by the board. Uh, we also have landscaping plan to present. Mr. Emanuel is here. And then Mr. Lucy had asked for like a context plan, and we submitted that, so we're prepared to, to show that to the board. I just didn't know what order the board would prefer on those items.
Does the order of the board members that Mr. McGrath presented seem reasonable?
I think it's backwards.
Of course.
I would do the, in my opinion, I would do the overall big picture of where does this set in? Then I would look at what changes that made architecturally, and then I would see how that office would landscape.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Humble opinion.
That's why I asked. Okay.
Okay, big picture, and then we'll, we'll go in the order Chip suggests. I think that's reasonable.
So with that said, I will bring up, uh, the context plan that, um, Peter and John worked on. Hopefully, I can, hopefully I can get this up. The, the other thing I'd like to just add, um, on this UPS thing, which, you know, really doesn't impact the traffic counts, you know, I told, I had mentioned to the board that I'm looking into that. And, and I'm pulling some records from Linfield on that. I had done some stuff on that before because I, I don't think anybody feels good about that. Um, what's happening there, uh, to our town, and, um, you know, I have now, um, three, three owners on that street, and I don't think they're too happy either. So, so we're, we're doing a little research on that, and we'll report back when we find some information out on that. That might be helpful to everybody.
Thank you.
So. Here you go. Can, can you see that?
Yes.
Maybe I should shrink it a little bit. Is that size okay? So you can kind of see everything? Or do you want a bigger, Mr. Chair? A little bit bigger?
I'll let the board members, I, yeah, I'm, as you go through each property, we might want to zoom in just if, if folks want to see him a little bit bigger in context, but, I mean, this helps for the overall.
Okay. Maybe, oh, yeah, that's too big. Um, John, are you the best one to kind of walk down the street here? Um, is, is that something you could do?
Um, I can certainly tell you, go through the approach that we went, um, though, basically, we took photographs of all the, the surrounding, um, buildings in the neighborhood. Um, you know, and got for pretty much all of the, the, these buildings, we got, um, basically elevations at the uh, first floor and elevation that the top, so we ended up, um, computing the, the building heights, uh, of these buildings. And then also I looked at the, um, basically to try to come up with building, the building coverage percentage for each of the lots. I took a look at, uh, just took the assessors in terms of what the area of each of the lots were. And then from the town G I S, I looked at the building footprints and then came up with, um, building coverages for uh, each of these, each of these parcels that are shown on here. And there's a, there's a very range, um, you know, majority of the, the buildings were in the the ten fourteen up to the twenty-five percent building coverage. Um, and then height-wise, there was a wide variety of, of heights, um, you know, anywhere up to, I think, tallest was forty-eight feet. Um, you know, probably the average was somewhere around thirty feet. Just to give some context for our, the proposed site is, uh, we are, our, our, our coverage, our building coverage is thirty-four point four percent. Um, the allowed coverage is, maximum is thirty-five percent. And in terms of, I, I know there was, I know we're talking about density and, um, the fact that there were wetlands on the site. So I took a look at how many allowable units um, based on the zoning of one unit per twelve hundred square feet. And a, excluded the area that was boring vegetated wetland that was on the property, which is not how the zoning written, but I took that out, so that you end up with about forty-one thousand square feet um, of upland on the property, and that would, based on that twelve hundred fifty per unit, would allow us to, um, build thirty-four units. So we would be under even that number. Um, the only other thing I'd like to point out, we didn't, I didn't look at all these sites for minimum, uh, open area. That would be kind of a tall task, but, um, I did just want to point out that the minimum required open area is thirty percent under the zoning, and we are at fifty-three percent. So, um, we're well above that in terms of open area.
John, what is the proposed height of our building? Of the, no, our, the proposed six-ten?
Yeah, sorry, um, it is, it changed a little bit. Give me one second. Yeah, we are proposing forty-five feet.
So, if I look at five eighty, where you're actually below five eighty, correct?
Yeah, five eighty, yeah, elevation-wise, we're below it, and, um, you know, in terms of overall height, it's, it was forty-eight feet high.
And did you take into account the, the, uh, forty B behind it?
No, I didn't, I didn't look at that. I thought the board was kind of more interested in the the corridor of Salem Street, and that, that building is set back pretty far. It's not something that you really see when you're driving down Salem Street. Something I can add if, if you would like.
No, I just was curious. I, that's a peak building, and I think it's three stories, so it's, the peak is probably up there as well.
Yeah, I'd say it's similar, yes.
I mean, I guess, for me, it was interesting to see that, you know, the two buildings next to each other, that would be probably seen as often as not, uh, are pretty similar. And your building across the street, how, how big are, you don't list that, do you?
Yeah, across the street, yeah, that's up there.
Yeah.
With thirty, with thirty-three feet. And I am
I guess I was looking at the other red-roofed one with the big parking lot in front, but that's Linfield, isn't it? That one.
That one, yeah, we didn't, I didn't go and, um, yeah, that's the little shopping plaza.
That's low, okay.
But that's, yeah, that's, you know, one little over one story, and again, it, it, you get into Linfield, so
Yeah.
Different, different town, different zoning.
And I'm sorry if you already said this, John, the, the one we approved of five eight one, you, you're showing the existing properties. What's the height of that new building?
Um, the proposed, yeah, I do have, I have up there, if you go a little bit higher, I have the approved building.
I hope there it is. Thank you. Okay.
That was proposed at forty-nine point one feet high.
About the same height as the one across the street that exists.
Yeah.
Next to this property.
And that was four stories altogether.
Yeah. So you'd have a few buildings here in close proximity of that similar height, forty-five to fifty. Okay. Tom, you've yet to chime in.
Well, that answered a lot of my questions. I'm glad he looked at the, the amount of what, what, you know, I know zoning doesn't look at it, but taking the wetlands out of it. Uh, I, I was interested in that. And I guess the only other thing in this can maybe wait to the architecture, uh, portion of it is just, you know, how the building addresses the street. Um, so I guess I'll wait on that till we get into that.
All right, but this, this is helpful. It's, again, good to see some, somewhere where the peaks potentially are in the, in the neighborhood. And, you know, on this side of the street anyway, it's sort of, that, that one that it's adjacent is sort of the, the tallest, and then they proceed down from there. But it's good to see the perspective in the range. So, John, thank you.
Just for additional perspective, um, Mr. Chair, we're not, certainly not going there, as you can see, but in the business zoning district where all these properties are sixty feet is allowed by right. And, um, but where you have special, uh, permit jurisdiction on this project, I don't think you would let us go there, and we're not, we're not seeking to go there. So. But other uses that wouldn't have jurisdiction of this board could go sixty feet.
Brian? Just for, and John, just because you tend to be involved in these as much as Brian is these days, um, this should become part of your general information, because we ask for it every time.
I do agree with that.
Yeah, point well taken.
Yeah. Uh, this is, I mean, it gives us all good perspective.
Sorry, keep moving on you.
Okay, any other comments, questions, board members? And again, this was in the packet sent to us, so we can refer to it afterwards or on our own, um, or at future hearings, um, but, uh, okay. With that, then the next topic was looking at architecture and the updates that you made. And then we'll move on to landscaping.
You're on mute, Brian.
I think that was on purpose.
Maybe it's Peter.
Nope.
I need, I was gonna ask Brian to bring up the
I did, Peter.
Hi, Brian.
Can you see it now?
Not yet.
Oh, sorry. Hold on.
Well, Russ.
Well, Russ.
Hang on. Coming. Now.
Thank you.
Yep.
So now, now we're looking at the updated rendering of the building. Worked on getting the center where the entrance of the building is located to be much more prominent. And did a series of iterations, but decided to carry that. Bay that we had included in the building into the corner and bring the entrance forward. So now it no longer sits in board, but actually projects out. With working with John and the landscape architect have an area in the front where you're going to see. Some benches and landscaping, a fair amount of glass into the lobby. And we had to lose or reallocate a parking space there to make that happen. I think we were saying it looked like the van pull over area. But we've moved that and allowed for a nicer entrance, I believe. I carried the, the magnet, the mass of the entrance up three stories. So the bedrooms in these. Two second and third floor apartments are really nice in those units because they take advantage of the. The bay as part of that. We will see it in the plan when we shift, but. Also, I took, if you look to the right of the building where it meets Salem Street, I inset two feet. On the left and two feet on the right and brought height of this section of the building down. So now it's, it's sep, that's correct. It's separating itself from the, the. Larger section of the building, which is the corner two pieces. And then I repeated that here on the. On the left hand side where I inset the building, so that it pulls back and down. We worked pretty hard to get the parapet walls to be more integrated. I, I think in our initial pass, they were up and down. They weren't cohesive. I think now we've got them more cohesive. So we had to adjust, John had to adjust some parking, just shift things so that now this building works with the, with the parking under. See if I've caught everything. That's pretty, Brian, if you could just bring up the floor plan now, the first.
One second before you shift off to this slide.
Yeah, sorry.
Just to help us visualize again and to make sure we're seeing what we're, could be here.
Yeah.
We've yet to get the landscaping, but is this potentially what's on the landscape plan? Is this reflecting reality that this isn't some, okay?
After we, we worked with the landscape plan and came back into the rendering. So the rendering and the landscape plan are agreeing with each other.
Okay, no, that helps just so that we're not.
Yeah, no.
A general landscape, but something that is potentially real or being proposed for this.
Right, that's right.
Good luck. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, actually, before they go to floor plans, is this, you know, I saw the, what was submitted, is this the only rendering you have? It'd be good to see what this building would look like if you're driving down Salem Street from Wakefield towards Linfield.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Correct. At this time, yes, at this time, this is the only rendering. We haven't rendered that other elevation in the building, but we, we surely can do that.
I agree, I agree with him. Basically, is turning up that lane and coming from the other direction. A similar sort of character ought to run down that side street, basically there. The other thing, Peter, is I'm wondering, and, and this is just a. Study basically was, what happens where you've got the, that raised cornice area that takes in the two bays in the corner? What happens if that was a different material? You know, it would set the two wings, set the other two pieces like wings off and maybe give a little more definition to the entry.
So you're, you're saying the, the main, the, what I'm calling the main mass of the building here. That where Brian has the cursor at that area, a different color or a different material?
Yeah, something, something to standard off more. And even, even if, because you're standing out. On the, on the right where it turns back in and goes to the other side of the building.
Yes.
Whether that, that same color basically goes through the far side. So it looks like that end bay basically is in fact. An addition of some sort or something like that. So it breaks up the mass a little bit, but I'm really wondering how much it would do for. The entry to have it even more defined, or would it, would it just be an ugly idea that doesn't, isn't worth it? But I think the only thing is you have to see it to find out.
Agreed. And, and, and doing, we worked on the bay where the bay was in similar in color, the, the entry bay. To the main body of the building and then it kind of lost itself. We tried it. Stories, you know, we, we, we also were doing that.
I, I, I think having the bay black like the rest of more gray, I think is the right thing to do, but I'm just wondering whether there's a slight difference. That's noticeable, but not too noticeable in that whole area that just sort of brings it out a little bit more.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Just to kind of piggyback off what Jim is saying. So I'm pointing to my screen as if you can see it. So if you go to the left of where the entry is, and so you have those two kind of bays that are there where the, on the right side, you have the one. Not those who go past where the little jog is, yeah. And would it affect the height at all if you jogged that first section down even? Another little, what did you say? It's about two feet?
About two feet, yes.
I'm just curious to see if that would kind of balance the way the building looks out a little bit more. If that section was dropped down a little bit, or is that going to change your interior too much?
So you, you, you don't mean down and high, you mean push it back more?
Well, no, see how there's the parapet on the middle pieces?
I do, yeah.
And then if you go to the right, how that, you know, it steps down, it's just that one area. But if you look on the left hand side, you have two of those sections. So you have.
I, I see, I see, yeah.
So if you go in between, like where you, yeah, right there, could you put another parapet right there and then step that down a little bit more?
Possibly, yeah.
Okay, I would just be curious to see what it looked like. And then as far as like Jim was saying with the paint color on the middle. Did you try reversing the colors of just that section? So the background is the dark and then the window area is light?
No, we did not do that. I, I think we were getting concerned that we were going to lose the fact that we kept the fourth floor dark.
Okay.
I think the whole point of doing the upper level basically is to make it go away as much as possible. And if you bring the foreground into it, then you're gonna, you're basically.
It's gonna extend it. Okay, just a thought.
Okay.
Anyone else before we change slides? We held you here.
Peter, is this a stucco on the top above the brick? What, what is the material?
No, it's brick and then it's, it's hardy plank siding and then it's going to standing seam metal up on the fourth.
So the hardy plank siding doesn't even really show in the rendering, really.
It's, it's, it's difficult. Brian, is it possible to zoom in a bit? Because the lines are actually in there.
Okay.
See it, see it now?
Okay, so that, that helps me because it, it looked like it was a very flat stucco, sir.
Yes, I, I, we kept trying to adjust it in the, in the rendering too. It was, it was difficult. But I, Brian, if you just zoom up a bit, we can see that. I wanted to show them the entrance up close like that. There you go. So you can see how we, we got a fair amount of glass in there now. So that's much more open than it was before. And raised where the six ten is higher. But that shows, that shows the hardy plank pretty well when you zoom in like that.
The other, the other question I have is, is we tend to get a little cookie cutter in, in these things with the. Patios or verandas or whatever. I mean, have you ever, I know we do a lot of vinyl and we do a lot of low maintenance, but have you ever thought about like? Tongue and groove or the old wood ceilings in these areas or something that just makes it a little bit unique? Than everything else we're doing these days?
Yes, I mean, up in here, that, that could be, that would look great, I think. I don't think we've explored it yet in these renderings, but. We did talk about if the sidewalls should change, for instance, should deciding not go back. So that whole area is treated differently.
Yeah, it, it would certainly do it for me. And I, I think, you know, we just get so concerned about. Hardy plank and vinyl and washable and maintenance free. That we've lost some of the good old wood aspect of things.
Okay.
Just a thought. I would love to see those kind of be different and unique. And I, I think it would bring a lot to the units too.
I, I, I agree. I wanted to show the floor plan just so you could see the impact. On the first floor of the site. So here, here you can see where the, the building is in setting. Both in, on the left and on the right. I think it helps us break that whole long facade that goes down into the, to the project behind. On the right hand side, it helps expand that lobby so that it doesn't look forgotten like it did before. That's much, mine is much more improved than it was. And Brian, if you just pop to the next level. Please, you can see here how I explained how that bedroom now has a whole bay integrated in it. That's a pretty nice master bedroom, probably an office space there would be, would be pretty neat. So we took that and, and the upper second and third floor would have. That kind of a, a unit. Fourth floor, of course, is different.
So I can't read it. What's the area behind the elevator?
It just. It says, does it say storage or utility? Sorry.
Storage.
Yeah, storage.
There it is, okay.
I mean, I think as we develop, we're going to lose some of that elevator rooms, et cetera. We, we, I even thought of maybe taking in, since these units are becoming pretty nice, maybe taking. The bathroom and the kitchen, kitchen, pushing it into that area a little bit. So maybe making that, that'll be a premier unit in the building.
Are there any building amenities?
No. You mean like a community room or something like?
Community room, a health, you know. An exercise bike and, or, or what this space may be. And Amy, I'm pointing at it now like people. Storage for each of the units, another storage locker, something like that.
Yeah.
The, the only, the only reason for possibly using that for an exercise area would be at the roof line where they can get skylights in. Otherwise, you've got no light going to that space.
I mean, that's, that's really the substantial changes in the floor plan, the upper floor.
Yeah, I.
Remain.
Curious, yeah.
Yeah.
And these, what's the bedroom breakdown again? I think it was, you've mentioned it in the first meeting, but just nothing really changed there. The thirty is broken down out.
It's thirty, it's six, one bedroom, twenty three, two.
There we go, yeah.
One, three bedroom.
Can you go back to the garage?
That, the site plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, there.
So the dumpster area that's in the back, how is that getting, is there going to be a truck that's able to get in there or how is, is that emptied from the outside?
That's gonna be wheeled, that's gonna be wheeled out of there, I think.
Okay, so who is gonna be in charge of that? Is there a maintenance person or? Okay, so they'll wheel that out to the street.
Reel it out, yeah.
Okay. And is there ventilation in there? So it's not stinking over there or?
Yes, there's, those openings that are shown are, are open to air.
Okay, okay.
Can you just show the roof as I was going through each floor? I, I think you said, I don't think anything changed, but. And that's where one of the, that's where one of the three bedrooms are, the one, three bedroom.
Fourth, yeah. And, and you can just see that that front area is kept clear where we. Kind of pulled it forward on the bottom right there, yeah. I think it came up about the. Trying to the right elevation. Just how, just how we are continuing to bring, do the breakup with the bays and the, and the inset balconies so that the. Flavor of the building is continuing down that, that right hand side.
And across the rear.
And across the rear as well, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions, board members?
Are those actual areas on that top floor where you can go outside? And I mean, are those enclosed?
No, you can go outside. There'll be terraces up there.
Go back to floor plan, I think it shows it.
Does on the fourth, yeah.
Those hatch areas or patio?
That's right, yes, yep.
Sorry about that, I'm giving everybody a headache. Right, when you see it all recessed on the. Elevation, you might think it's all sort of connected, but it really isn't. Each unit. Has their own sort of divided space or private space. Naturally, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess I just have a general comment. I appreciate everything that's been done. I appreciate the context. You know, obviously Peter's taking a thoughtful approach to this. If you could stop it there, Brian, just looking at the building footprint or that one's fine too. Yeah, when we did the one across the street, we had them rotate the building. So there was real frontage on Salem Street. When I, I guess part of my problem is I look at this building is. It doesn't really address the street because when you approach it from Wakefield, you're going to be seeing what is kind of the back of a building. You're going to experience a side of a building. As you go by there and then everything is recessed back. And when you come from Linfield. You know, there is no front to the building to me that fronts on Salem Street, I guess. Maybe I'm not articulating that right, but.
No, you're saying it looks great coming from Wake, Linfield, but you don't really get that much coming from Wakefield.
Well, yeah, that's why I asked for the rendering for the other side. It, it has to be. You know, that's how most people from Wakefield will experience the build.
Is it possible to flip flop it, Peter?
Well, we, John and I looked at that early on, whether the building could be flip flopped and. It's, it has to do with that whole, if, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, but the whole. Wetland issue with the Saugus River. And where we're building. So thi- this minimizes where the building sits into the wetland buffer.
Yeah, I, I see it, I see it as setback like that. It, it gives a more open space to the street. And at the same time, because you've got this open wetland, it also sucks that into that whole space, basically. So I. I don't quite see it in the same light you do, although I do, I do want to see what that other side looks like. It's, it's gotta be a hell of a lot better than the neighbor up the street, who's just a bunch of punched windows and a brick wall, you know?
Yeah, yes. It, it'll be interesting to see too, when we project it, how much, what you see, how much this building cuts off what you see or maybe it doesn't. But we'll know that when we bring the building in, the rendering into the streetscape.
You mean the adjacent property?
Yeah. You know, if you're on Salem Street, does that block you till you way up close? I'm not a hundred percent sure, but.
There's a driveway there, but yeah, there, you know, it'll be interesting to see, yeah.
Right, yeah, it will.
I mean, I'd like to see relief on the street and having, you know, having something projected of the street and then some setback basically at the same time. So it's not a, doesn't become a wall, particularly with your neighbor. That's a. Higher building in a way. It's, it got more floors. And it becomes, it starts to form a wall. And I, I wouldn't want to sort of form a wall along with it without breaking it up. I mean, the scale of the, the scale of the buildings is a bunch of. You know, units, buildings basically along there. It's, it's not like a big complex. So it's just a series of owners basically broken. So it's just a series of owners basically broken up. Kind of like that more than I would having a solid wall. And it doesn't matter which direction you come from, but I think. This direction gives you the opportunity to get more green space. Basically, coming up to the building where the other side is, is a hard surface roadway. And what are you going to get from that? Not a whole lot.
Yeah.
Peter, I'd also like to see it not only coming from Salem, I guess that'd be coming maybe east or whichever direction opposite of this one. Uh, but I'd also like to see it if you're coming down Walton, like what are they seeing when they're driving from Walton down to Salem?
Okay.
And the neighbors, you know, the neighbors behind, what are they all looking at back there?
Right.
The only thing behind is the forty B, right?
Yeah, yeah.
That's on the right-hand side though, right?
No, Walden's another street up.
On the other side of the brick building.
No, it's in between.
No, that driveway's in between.
Driveway to the forty B.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so still though, I'd like to see, you know, what they're seeing. You know, elevation wise, I guess what they're going to be looking at when they drive down it.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we were saying earlier.
But if you're on Walton, yeah, how much of the building is masked by that other apartment?
Yeah.
What will they see?
I was thinking that's, that was Walton right there, okay.
But is that doable, Peter?
Yeah, that's doable, sure.
Okay, okay. I think those two renderings will just help us see the full, a more complete picture in, in the other direction, so.
Sure.
All right, anything else folks? I'm just looking at the clock here. We've been two hours and still getting at the landscaping. So, a- anything else at this point while we contemplate? Other aspects of this and we'll see it again next time and there might be other things we want to get into, but. Before we close off on all of the architecture and so forth. Okay. All right, thank you, Peter. Yeah. So, go ahead, yeah, let's go over to landscaping. And welcome our friends, Mr. Manuel.
Okay, hello everyone. Uh, Brian, do you have the landscape plan you can?
I do. I do, Jim, hold on.
Thank you.
There you go, Jimmy.
Okay, thank you, Jim Manuel here, landscape architect in the project. If you could, um. Maybe just zoom in, we'll start at the Salem Street kind of streetscape first. A bit more and we can kind of work back. Into the site.
That okay, Jim?
Yeah, I think.
Want a bigger?
There's, right there's good.
That good?
Yes. Very good. Good job. Um, so what we're looking at here is a, is a green space along the front and you saw the rendering which is. A pretty good representation of the, the types of plants or, or the, the density of greenery that we're planning for the frontage of this. We've got, first of all, trees that would be along the streetscape, so we've got. In front of the five parking space area there, we would have two red maples which should get pretty good canopy. Uh, those are trees that get, you know, thirty to forty feet tall at maturity, so you think of that. In relation to the scale of the building, um, that will give you some sense of the. The prominence that those trees will have. The tree that's at the part of the building that's closest to the street would be a different tree. Princeton Century Ginkgo, which, uh, we have a plant list. Uh, as part of your packet. That's just a tree that has a little bit of a narrower, um, canopy, so it wouldn't be growing into the building. At that location. If we go to the left side of the drawing, uh, all those symbols, tree symbols down. Uh, that follow the twenty-five foot buffer wetland line would be, uh, river birch trees. We'd use a heritage river birch that would provide some, um. I think attractive contrasting bark to the, to the wetland area to the side there. And, uh, provide a good buffer edge along that naturalized area, though. You'll notice the hatched area is all a, um. Conservation seed mix, so everything in the conservation side of the parking lot. Uh, would be. Not really turf grass, but we would use a more of a conservation mix with some low-growing shrubs. That would encircle that. We talked earlier about the traffic, uh, sightlines. Just want to note that, um. Fourteen feet back from the. Travelway brings us to about that sixty-six contour number right there at the driveway entrance. And at that point, if we just draw a, a line horizontally or parallel to the roads. You'll just notice that there's nothing, um, in the view line that would obstruct views from pulling out. Even, you know, even though it wouldn't be a triangle, just a parallel line itself, everything's set back enough from fourteen feet. So that we don't have any issues here with, with the sightlines and so forth. What we're trying to do in the parking lot design is what we always do, keep it low maintenance. Uh, maintain the ability to have some greenery during the growing seasons, but also enable it so that we can. Have some room for snow storage, so where the, where the seven space parking lots, uh, spaces section is. A lot of those would be, uh, perennials, things like, uh, feather reed grasses or ornamental grasses, some. Flowering perennials and so forth. That would be in full bloom, pretty vigorous during the growing seasons, but then in the winter months. Uh, would be okay if they were, uh, plowed upon or. You know, had to be, had to allow for some clearing, uh, for snow, uh, in the, in those times. We have some low shrub plantings in the islands that come out in the parking lots, just again to maintain sightlines, so you'll see those areas there, that's what, that would be a. A growl of sumac. Um, and then along the frontage of the building, like in the garage size, we have some clathor. Most of the path of plants in this planting scheme, uh, with a few exceptions, are native plants, we're in a, so. Buffer zones galore here and, um, we're just using some selections of plants. That will, that are native, that would, uh, be compatible with. What the Conservation Commission had, um, looked to see as well too. You'll notice, uh, maybe we can zoom in just a little bit, uh, where the entrance is. Brian, just so we can see the, um, changes to where the parking and the entry are there. We've got a, um. Plantings along the foundation and then. At the garage to the right, there would be, uh, a walkway that would lead. Up to the parking area and then you'll see that we have a. At the plaza entry or the entry to the, to the building there. We created kind of a, a, a plaza space. This is where, I think we've lost one parking space from the previous version because the parking was a lot closer or the. The entry was smaller, but this would be more of a, um. Of an entry. Open space, so to speak, or, and we would put a seat wall, as you see there, with a planter box behind it, we've got some box. On either side of the diagonal entry door, so there's some there and some on the, um. On the other side there to provide greenery throughout the year. If we go just to the back now, a little bit, just as a general. So pan down, so we get to the more of the building. If you could, uh, Brian. Can you hear me?
You're muted, Brian.
What do you need, Jim?
But just if you can pan down a little bit on the, uh, on the drawing or zoom out just a little bit, I think it'd be fine, so we can see the whole site. That's great. Okay, so, so there we see the rest of the site in the context of the, of the lot line and the wetland line. And where we, about the, uh, the wetlands or, or in the buffer zones, we're, we're proposing. Um, a conservation, a native conservation seed mix. Uh, and all those, and all those hatch dairies, and we'll sprinkle in a few native plants. We've got some, um. Elderberries, some red twig dogwoods. Cranberry bush by Brown, high bush blueberries and some shrubs, just sort of beneficial shrubs. No turf or anything along the back, but then as we come around the side where the driveway is to the, um, to the apartment, uh, complex here. That would be grass, a grass strip. Uh, which would be along the roadway edge and you can see kind of in grayscale the trees. Bradford pear trees that would just remain as part of the, um, as part of the streetscape on that side, so. We've got really the whole frontage, if you, if you look at it almost like a U shape, uh, on, around the drawing, we've got. Uh, three of the sides are sort of flanked by trees and then the back is more of an open space opening up to the wetland area. And that's really the, basically the scheme of the landscape. If you can answer any questions, that's if you have them.
Jim, you have the four trees which are evident on the neighbors' properties remaining. Obviously they're the neighbors. With the canopy, they start coming over pretty darn close to the building. And I'm just thinking about how, you know, I'm, I've kind of jumped to constructability.
Yeah.
Is that even possible? I mean, you've got lifts and everything else going up and down these sides. What, what is, what are your, I mean. What's the chance that they're not going to get damaged and how are you planning on addressing that?
Well. They're, first of all, they're, uh, going to be much further away. From the new building than they are the existing building and I don't expect that they're really going to gain. A lot more girth. I think they're like a Cleveland select which, which is a vertical.
Yeah.
Growing variety of that type of tree. So I don't think we're really, given, given that the root zone, so let's start at the roots, given that the root zone has already been restricted by the building. Which is closer to those trees in the current condition than it is in the pros, proposed condition. I don't think we're going to have an issue, um, with. The root zone of those trees being a problem, so.
You think the current building is closer to those four trees?
I'm sorry?
You think the current building is closer to those four trees?
Yes, the current building sits closer to those four trees than our proposed building. And, uh, it does so by a dimension of, um.
Only.
It's about eight feet closer.
Well, by, by just, uh, Google Earth, one tree is dead center in the. Of the other, of the other building, the, the two other ca- uh, are at the corners of the building and then the. One's towards the back where the parking lot is. So there's really only one tree that's girdled by the foundation of that.
Well, if we zoom in, Brian, can you zoom in on the two, on the trees, those trees that we're talking about? Let's hit it, hit it like five times, I think.
Which ones? Where, where you want me to go?
Just, just down, uh, at the front, right, front right-hand corner of the.
Right down in this area?
That area there. Keep going. Hang on.
Was that the building superimposed in there?
So that's good, so we can see this, if you look at the hatched area, you can see in grayscale the building superimposed, uh, right up. At a zero setback along the lot line there.
Yeah.
So I think we've got. Probably.
More.
Two or three trees that are.
Canopies might be drawn a little big.
They're, they're pretty, the, the, yeah, they're, they're pretty close, but they may be a little bit, maybe a little bit bigger than what the actual condition is.
I don't think so, not by the Google photograph, basically. I think they're about the right scale and the actual location.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's pretty close, so I think that the locations are pretty accurate, so. I mean, it was surveyed, so I, I'm, I'm, I have to assume that, that's where they are. Um, and I look at that and I see. You know, three, three out of the four are within that zone. Or, um. They would have been impacted in some degree by the building that's there. Again, they're, they're not going to get much wider, they're already at about. As they're drawn, they're drawn at about eighteen or nineteen foot diameter and that tree would, wouldn't get any more than twenty feet really at maturity. Uh, so I don't expect that that's going to get too much wider. Um, so that's not what I'd be concerned about. I would really more be concerned about the roots on, I see that the roots on of the trees. Is impacted by the existing building right now to the point where they're. Not necessarily girdling themselves, but they're deflected by the foundation of that existing building. Uh, in. Two or three of the conditions, it's really the fourth tree that is not currently. But I don't see any evidence of it growing any differently than, than the others, so, um.
Yep, you know what the solution is? You leave the foundation along that edge in place and put the fa- new foundation on the other side of the old, use it as a, use it as a, a retaining wall.
Yeah, well, it's certainly serving as a root barrier right now, um, and. Uh, I, I just made it to say that usually the concern is the excavation of the root zone. Um, and that's what. That's something that there aren't any roots where that building is. Uh, so I think that we can. Safely assume that there is constructability along that edge because of the proximity of the building there, except for the last tree. And I think that last tree, um. That's where we have. Some, you know, an opening there, that's where we would have to just be a little bit careful with. Maneuvering around to, um, you know, to build that wall if. I, I, again, because they're columnar narrow trees, I don't think that they would be, uh, impacted. We always do a type of a tree protection. Uh, around these trees, so we could put up some type of a barrier along the property line. Uh, to prevent any construction vehicles from, you know, compacting the site, especially at that last tree as well too.
And can you go to the, um. Legend, is that on here?
A right-hand corner.
With the tree size, yeah, keep going. Keep going. There we go.
I was going to ask you, Jim, that these calipers met your.
Well, that's.
Met your requirements.
I gotta clear out the pictures. So one of the concerns I always have is to, you know, we've at least gone from. Two to two and a half to two and a half to three. Um. But, you know. One of the, the, and I know everybody says, well, if you get a bigger root ball and a larger tree, it's more difficult and chance of survival is less. Uh, but we are irrigating everything. I think to help kind of soften and to. Increase the. Streetscape quicker. Would be to increase this, to see, you know, instead of a two and a half to three, but get a real three inch, you know, not, not the smaller on the side. And I, and I think the seven to eights. On the, uh. Birch's are just too small, you know, I can reach, reach up and touch, touch the top of those. Uh, if they're an eight footer and, and, you know, I think the, the. Yeah, I'm okay with going smaller on some of the shrubs and stuff and letting them grow in, but I. I think the trees on these projects really need to start. Becoming their own statement so that. We start getting. The scale of softening the building quicker. You know, in order, in order for those birches to make an impact coming from the Linfield line or. Even just to make an impact. Seven to eight doesn't really do it. Um, you know, you gotta be up in the ten, twelve range. And I, and I think for the. For the gink and, and some of the statement trees in front, we should really try to find. Some really nice, mature, big stock. But I, I think we need to really think about what tree, you know, there's three of them in front. That can really make a, a difference and an impact, so I, I think we just need to, on the trees. Increase the, the size a little, significantly in the birches. And at least a little bit in the maples and the ginkgo.
Hey, you can take a look at that, certainly.
What, what do you think, Jim?
No, I would, I would agree with you. Absolutely, I'm bored.
I was really thinking about Emmanuel, but chime in if you want.
Yeah, I, you know.
If your name's Jim, chime in.
There's always, there's always a balance between, um, I, I, I go before other boards where they're. Concerned about water conservation and not using irrigation so much and so forth, uh, where. They prefer to see smaller trees, the, the. Ideal size in some instances has been established for some of these plants is two and a half to three and many different municipalities where I work. Uh, just because that strikes a balance of being there, you know, starting to look like a tree and not requiring too much maintenance, but. I, I think that, you know, I, and birch trees. Will grow incredibly quickly once they, once they do get established, um, because they can take off. After year three, they can, they can grow, you know, eight to ten feet on a given year, so. But, um.
But you just said the key, after, after year three.
Yeah, right.
Waiting for three years.
But the point being that after year three, the, the longer you let the tree establish. Um, the more resilient it becomes, because these trees.
No question, and a seeded lawn is better than a sodded lawn and, and. I, I hear it all, but. I don't know. I'm getting to the point in age that I don't buy green bananas anymore, you know?
Yeah.
All right, so you'll.
My thoughts.
Okay.
I take it where you want to.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? And of course, you've got the all important note below there that everything will be irrigated, so we don't worry about conditioning anything. Everyone's learned that by now. Okay. All right, anything else, board members on this? All right, thank you, Jim. All right, Brian.
Who's next?
John, John, do you have, do you have something you need to share on the site plan, John? Oh, no. You left on mute, John. Oh, there we go, yeah.
Just merely, I, you know, we did update the site plan to reflect the, the new building footprint. In terms of, did rework the parking out in front. Just so everyone's clear, we lost two spaces in the front over by the front entrance way. But we were able to rework the parking inside, so we gained one, so net, we lost one, so we now have fifty-five spaces on site as opposed to fifty-six. And yeah, I think, I think that was pretty much summarizes. When I did add proposed BGC all over the place on the parking.
They're learning so quickly.
Yeah, and the one thing I want to point out on the landscaping plan that Jim did such a good job over here, that the riverfront area, you know, you, you talk about aesthetics from, you know, coming into Wakefield or leaving Wakefield. That whole area is gonna look so much better than what it looks at now. It's gonna really highlight the Saugus River, similar to what happened with the storage facility on Water Street. You remember what that riverfront looked, looked like before that project was built and you drive by there now and it looks like it's a garden right along the river.
Well, this, this one looks like you're driving in a Saugus right now.
Yeah, it's a mess, yeah. And it's gonna be all cleaned up and it's gonna be very attractive.
And I assume this plan goes in context with whatever Concom wanted. Because they saw this before we did, right?
Yeah, well, this plan is coordinated with the conservation.
It is? Okay, good.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Ding. All right. So we can open up the public testimony on the last couple of topics before we agree on sort of the homework for next time and where we think we need to go. So again, if there's any member of the public who wishes to ask a question, make a comment, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Not seeing cameras waving, not seeing hands going up. Going once, going twice.
Well, we've gone from forty-one percent participants to twenty-four, so.
Yeah, we peaked the traffic.
I think they got in their cars and went home.
Non-peak hours, okay. Okay, well, we'll close the public testimony again on, on, for tonight. There'll be other opportunities in future meetings for, again, members of the public who are here. So back to the board and, and to Brian and team, so what would we like to see next? Covered a lot of ground tonight. Going back to my notes. I mean, we've seen landscaping, architecture, traffic. There's no signage proposed. Write the address on the building, as you think, and about some sort of monument or entrance sign, or just leaving the address at the, at the front entrance, Brian.
Well, I think it's gonna be at the front entrance, but that's a very good point, and I'm gonna talk to our client about that.
Okay, and lighting? Primarily, I guess, you know, building lighting and parking lots and, yeah. Yeah, we want to do that next time.
Yep.
The other thing I would, the other thing I would throw out to Mr. Emmanuel, too, and we haven't done much of this. But, you know, landscape lighting is a lot, is a way to do a lot of soft lighting around parking spaces and whatnot that can also make something look elegant and, and be a lot softer than some other lighting. I would not be opposed to, you know, look at some landscape lighting as part of the project. As a part of the total lighting concept.
Sure.
I don't think we do enough of that. It too can soften the building.
Yep. All right, so lighting, so we've got some updates from tonight, architectural updates, different renderings, different views, landscape updates. We'll look at lighting, what else?
Have we gotten the report from engineering yet?
Yeah, was this the one we got literally?
No, you've already gotten that. John, John, you've addressed that, right?
I think we did that kind of like week one, didn't we?
Oh, maybe we did. No, the one we got today was for the new project that we haven't opened yet. Just looking at the official package, but yes, I do think we covered it last time.
Nothing new as far as I can remember.
Brian, what else do you think we need to address?
I don't know if you want to know an M plan.
Are we ready for that?
I don't know.
We're at that point.
I don't know if you are or not, I'm just raising it.
I mean, we do want to know an M plan.
Well, I mean, I know you need to, you need to, you, you, I know you're not done with
Amy, crash and
I know you're not done with, with architecture, because, you know, board members want to see those new elevations and so I just don't want to get ahead of myself, and I'm just raising.
Well, you've, you've also got materials, basically architectural materials. Including, including like at the, assumingly, where Jim has created that entry, basically, I assume there's some materials there basically in paving. And, you know, the seating system and that sort of thing, and maybe as Chip says, some lighting, basically, that might be in that area. Or even some downlighting that's off the building that basically accents the building, but at the same time, maybe act some, accent some shrubbery or something, whatever.
I think we've got to become more creative in, in some of these aspects.
Okay, so materials package, Brian?
Yep.
Is it, it might be some different materials architecturally, if the, the team looks at like wood on the balconies and things, but the, the hardy boards, the all the rest of it, the usual materials package, so we could get
Lighting is
Yep.
Yep. Cut sheets and so forth, but yes, the lighting plan, okay. So at least a few topics for next time and maybe we'll see where we're at that point.
Yeah.
I mean, you are putting the O and M plan together.
Okay.
At this point, you've done enough of them. We only have one meeting in December.
Yep. So, and that would be, let's just get our calendar out here real quick and just make sure we're on the same page. That is December sixteenth.
Right before our Christmas party.
Any final comments, board members, before we entertain a motion to continue?
No.
I move that we continue this to the sixteenth of December.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Chip?
Aye.
Amy?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Greg? I see, I see an eye. Joe?
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye.
And I unanimously say aye. So, thanks, team. We covered a lot of ground tonight. We'll see you in a few weeks.
Yeah, thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, have a, have a good Thanksgiving, everyone.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Something tells me we're gonna see a lot of them in about
Well, to the rest of the team anyway, but yeah.
It's the same team.
Yeah.
Back.
Well, we do have one in between. We do have thirty-seven Central Street in between, so. So our next continued hearing, twenty-one dash fifteen. Brian Fennachetti, thirty-seven Central Street.
Yes, and Brian and Judy are on, right? I see you. Hi, hi, guys.
Yep.
Great. You can, you can
Back.
You can take your mute off, Judy, if you want. Take the mute off. You're on mute. Can she hear me?
Yeah.
There you go. Okay, great. Guys, that's okay.
Wasn't working.
Yep. So, so, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, I'm here in behalf of Brian Fennachetti, the owner of thirty-seven Central Street, Brian and Judy here. And basically, since the last meeting, they, they've went, gone back to the drawing board. And they've gotten creative and they've actually figured out a way to, to shrink the building down and to fit it behind the house to actually comply with zoning. And they actually met with Mrs. Sheer Yellow, who's on tonight, and showed her that plan. And I think what their desire is, is to withdraw this without prejudice. And I, I believe, and I, I don't mean to speak for Sharon, but, but, but Brian told me that that's the direction she prefers, rather than going for the variance. And in any event, it's gonna be a by right proposal that Brian and Judy will be able to do. They've already met with the building inspector, Ben. And he's agreed that it's entitled to a building permit, so I think that we're requesting that we would, would draw this application without prejudice. Does that make sense, Brian? Did I get that right?
Yes, yep, just, just the easiest, simple of, it's gonna cost less money and no aggravation. Great.
I'm not sure what this means.
To withdraw without prejudice.
I'm, I just, just want to make sure where Cerriella has been participating in this. I just want to make sure you said you're not sure what this means.
Yeah, yeah, they're still gonna build, but what?
Brian, can you just?
Yeah, you know, my understanding is, is they showed you a new plan.
No, they didn't show me, no, they didn't show me a new plan. They, she came over and just said, you know, we're, we're gonna withdraw and, and just build a shed.
And I showed you on that plant, Sharon, in the corner, in the back corner where we were gonna build the shed.
Oh, I thought you were talking about a diagram. I didn't see no diagram, though.
Yeah, that was the diagram that I had, that I showed you where the, the shed was gonna go in the back corner of our property.
It was a plot plan that Brian has a copy of. It's I revise a part plan. I've already spent over five thousand dollars doing this, so I drew it on a plot plan. It has a conform with the guidelines of the town. Brian, do you want to show that?
I can try to, hold on, let me see if I can do this.
Guys, this is
Yeah.
You've, you've requested something.
Yeah.
We don't need to rehab.
Yep. Well, I, it's, it's up to you, Mr. Chair. I can show it. I mean, bottom line is, you know, we're looking to withdraw this without prejudice because we, we don't need any relief from the board.
Correct.
What they wanted. Yeah, what, what it means is they significantly shrunk down what they were gonna build to build it within the conformity of the zoning requirement, so they don't need any variance.
Okay, so what is the requirements? That's probably what I don't know.
It has to be seven and a half feet from the property line in the back and the, and the, and the side, and it has to be behind their, behind their house.
Behind the house? Uh, what, like, 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 what size? Like ten by twenty-eight or, or, I mean, you know, what's the size?
Well, that's gonna be, with all due respect, that's gonna be up to them as long as they meet the zoning requirement.
Well, what, that's what I'm trying to find out, I guess, what's the zoning requirement?
There is no limit on the size, as long as it's set back behind the property.
I'm not understanding that.
Yeah.
Again, if it's, if what they're proposing is by right, that's something, again, you could maybe look at the plan again and better understand it, again, outside the context of this meeting, but if they're requesting to withdraw without prejudice, that just means there's no longer a hearing before the ZB, if we go forward and vote for that, they would no longer be here. They would reply for building permit to do what they want to do, what they feel is by right. And they would need any relief from this board to do what they want to do by right.
By right, so, so they still can build the, that they were talking about at the beginning?
No.
Obviously, that's what I'm not understanding.
No, they, they would build something by right that may be consistent with the plan that they showed you, that updated drawing, or something else, but again, that's something that you can continue to discuss. You know, outside of the context of this meeting. And if
So it's, so if they wanted to do do the appeal, they had to do it, they wanted that other size, so it's gonna be a different size, correct?
Don't know.
No?
I don't think this involves us anymore. I think we should move forward.
Yeah.
Come over and talk to you.
All right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, perfect.
That'll do good. All right.
Okay. So Chip, I, you may have been in the middle of a motion. Can you just restate for the record?
Motion to withdraw without prejudice.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, I think we can, let me just double check. So Amy, you weren't here for the last one. So let's myself, Jim, Chip, Joe, and Tom. All in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
And I will vote yes, so that is unanimous. So this application's been withdrawn. Good luck to you and whatever you propose to build and take care. Thanks for, thanks for coming. Yep, take care. And happy Thanksgiving to you. Thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you. It was interesting. I learned a lot.
There you go. Thank you. Bye. Okay.
Well, I told Brian before that. She said, Brian texted.
Computer.
I think I just did.
Okay.
Okay. All right, moving along. We're now under new hearings, twenty-one dash twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, one sixty-eight Lexington Street LLC at five twenty-five and five twenty-seven Salem Street.
Oh, what a surprise.
The team's ears been burning?
Back.
Yep.
They're back.
So this is, this is really the initial proposal on this at five twenty-five, five twenty-seven, and introduction of this project. The, the principal of the entity is Robert Zaraski. He is, he is online. Bob, are you there? Can you say hello to the board? Is he there, Bob?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great, I just wanted to introduce you to the board. So Bob, Bob's acquired the property. It's, it's next to One Pleasure Island Road. Also, is Peter here? Who's here from Phoenix?
Thanks, Brian. Jeff here from Phoenix.
Oh, yeah, it's Jeff, that's right. Peter told me that. So Jeff's, Jeff's handling this from Phoenix. And, and Chris Barajas is our site civil from Williamson Barajas. He's our site civil engineer on the project. As I've mentioned, this is a, a property that's situated at five twenty-five, five twenty-seven Salem Street. It's right next to One, One Pleasure Island Road. And what's being proposed here is twenty-one residential units, and then it said with a combination of offices. That's a little deceptive, because it's a combination of one office. It's not like a, a big office building. Bob just wants to have one office unit in the building. So it's a combination of, of twenty-one residential units and one office unit that will go on the property. This, as I've mentioned, it's, it's a total of twenty-one residential units. Bob's intention is, is for this to be a rental building, which is you know, a positive component, because rental affordable housing is needed. It will result in four affordable units out of the twenty-one that will be, go to our housing inventory and will provide a much needing, needed housing in Wakefield. So what we'd like to do tonight, you've already, you've actually already heard a lot about the traffic on this, and, and what happened is our traffic consultant on this is Vanessa. And as they should, they shared information with Bill Bergeron. So to make sure they were on the same page, so Bill was actually citing a lot of information on this. As you heard, the Traffic Advisory Committee normally states with projects this size, they don't require full-blown traffic studies. But Mr. Zaraski wanted to do it. Uh but Mr. Zaraski wanted to do it. Uh he said, I just wanna get ahead of this. I'm willing to spend the money and do a full-blown study. And that's what Viness did. So uh a lot of the counts that that Bill was referring to were were referenced in the in the report. We recognize that we will will submit this and go to traffic advisory as we 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 as we are required to do. But you've obviously already heard a lot about uh the traffic um aspects of this product project, which are are not significant. Uh in the whole scheme of things. So I think probably um the best way to go about this is is um is to um if I may. To hand it over to Chris and have him uh familiarize um you with the site. And then and then Jeff can go through the architectural aspects of what's being proposed on this site. Chris, would you mind? Can you take the screen, Chris?
Uh, yes, I can.
Great. Why don't you introduce yourself to the board, Chris, just so they you remember Chris. Chris was involved in Tarrant Lane.
Um, oh, yes.
Yes, I thank you as the chairman and members uh for the record, Chris Sperrages, a professional civil engineer from the Office of Williams and Sperrages up in Middleton. Happy to be uh appearing in front of the board again. Uh so I'm gonna. I'm gonna start off by showing, uh can everybody see the um uh the site plan here? Yes. Okay.
Gonna blow it up a little bit, Chris.
Yep, so I've got two I've got uh two screens here, so um uh. What you see in front of you here is our locust map and uh obviously we're. We're located at five twenty five Salem Street, right near the intersection of Pleasure Island Road. Uh Walton Street is just uh to the east here, and the two office buildings that uh Brian was talking about. Uh to the left, uh to the left right-hand side, if you will. Which would be the east is uh the office building with an address of five forty five. Uh Salem Street and just to the west is the office building that's on the corner. Uh that has a an address of One Pleasure Island Road, uh another office building, and our existing property is right right in the middle here. Uh right to the north of us is uh the highway or one twenty eight, so that forms one of our property lines in the back. And then across Salem Street, we have approximately a hundred and hundred and eighty four uh or so feet of frontage along Salem Street, which of course is a public way. Uh we're obviously near the east end of town. Um we're not too far away from the Wakefield infield line. Uh of course, we were just talking about um the project at six ten Salem Street, which is just down the street from us, of course. Uh the distance uh from the town line up to our site is about eight hundred and seventy five feet or so. For us, uh topographically, uh we're a bit higher uh in elevation uh than the property down near the river at six ten. Uh where their elevation is around elevation sixty three or so, we're as many as twenty feet higher than that in elevation. Uh so uh and the property is relatively flat. It's lower along Salem Street, and then it rises slightly uh towards the highway in the back. Our property line. Near the highway property line, uh elevation of the land is around elevation eighty five. And as we come down across the site, we're around elevation seventy seven along Salem Street. This is the existing conditions plan here. On the existing property, uh you may recall the um the old two-story wood building. Uh that's close that was closer to the street and the one that was a little bit further back. Uh there was a it was a mixed use um for a number of years. Uh folks, uh a family lived here. And not not that long ago, there are a couple of curb cuts in the existing condition uh that have access to the property. Uh it was a uh there's an access on either side of where the of where this uh house was situated out near the front. Back in June, um as we were working on the site plan and collecting existing information. We uh excavated a couple of test holes over on the right-hand side of the site. Where we expected to have to deal with uh stormwater management to get a handle on soils. Uh the soils here are very sandy, um and and the sand is as deep as uh twelve to fifteen feet below the surface, very sandy soils. Very little runoff um from the site in the existing condition, which um can be challenging uh in the proposed condition. As we're designing the project, we basically have to capture almost all the runoff that comes off of the parking lot in the building. Uh and put it back into the ground. Uh down about twelve to fifteen feet below the surface, um we did hit refusal. Uh and uh it was very hard, so the assumption is that uh that is that it's ledged down at that down at that elevation. For existing utilities, uh we have uh access to uh to all the utilities that are available to most folks in Wakefield. Including uh gas, the natural gas, electric. Um there's uh town water and town sewer obviously out in the street. A rather large sewer main, uh twenty one sewer main that that comes across the street. Um that slopes ever so slightly from uphill to downhill, uh down to Walton Street where it takes a takes a right. And heads down um into a different part of the town. Uh water is uh just across um the side of the street. And uh the property is currently served by all those utilities. And as you'll see in a minute for the proposed development, uh we're um we're just gonna be improving those uh. We're proposing to improve those connections uh to make sure that we can serve our building appropriately. So if I can zoom out a little bit here, go to the next sheet. Uh this is our um our topographic uh plan that shows the proposed building. And I'll uh switch over to a um. To a color rendering uh very quickly here, just so that you can see the building um in a little bit of color. Zooming in here, um you can see the proposed uh the proposed four-story uh apartment building.
Yeah, that switch didn't take. I don't know if you need to share more.
Okay.
We're still seeing the black and white version.
Okay, sorry about that. Let's just see here. Let's take that back. How's that?
That's in color. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Uh so uh the 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 proposed building, the four-story building is shown in in the brown color. Our paved areas are shown in in the gray colors, uh and uh and the landscape areas are shown in green, so pretty pretty straightforward. Uh because we were relatively close to the intersection uh of Salem Street. Excuse me, of Pleasure Island Road. Uh we decided that uh the best approach, because you can see the stop line here and the crosswalk at the signalized intersection at Pleasure Island Road. Uh we thought it would be be best to create the most amount of uh queuing spaces by placing our driveway on the on the east end of the site. And so we're proposing to access uh the site at one location now, eliminating the two former curb cuts. And just have one main entrance twenty four feet wide uh that would come in and access the property into the back. This is a twenty-four foot wide aisle and uh. Uh nine by eighteen parking spaces throughout. Uh and you'll see in a minute as I go over the the layout plan uh that that we have more than um more than adequate uh parking. Uh per the per zoning to support uh the proposed use. Uh as you come into the site. Uh dumpster access is a very straightforward back in this uh uh, if you will, the northeast corner of the site. And our site inside here is rel- relatively flat uh with a proposed sidewalk uh for residents. Around the main part of the building. And then out here along Salem Street, we're proposing uh to uh to improve the existing condition by installing a sidewalk along our frontage. Uh to the best of our ability here. That's about as far as we can take uh take this sidewalk. Uh at the intersection here, the signalized intersection at Pleasure Island Road. The existing sidewalk comes around the corner here and then just stops at the um at the crosswalk here. So there is a gap, uh but uh but we're um we're more than happy to uh to do what we can and do our part here. To install the sidewalk on the side of the street. From a. Stormwater standpoint, uh the project complies with D P stormwater management standards and regulations. Uh I mentioned that the soils are very sandy and um what we're doing to collect um that water is very simple. Uh the the site has been graded relatively flat inside the main part of the site, and so this is a little bit higher. Uh than the area down here, uh so water will simply flow across the parking lot and down to a a catch basin. To an oil grit separator and then into an underground stormwater management area. Uh the roof will also have a roof drain system, and we've shown how the roof drains would uh. Uh interconnect with one another in a series of pipes on the perimeter along the perimeter of the building. And also tie into the underground stormwater management area here. Uh because we have uh such good soils, uh it may infiltrate rapidly. Uh we do have to treat the water a little bit more than we normally would uh before we can infiltrate it. And so in addition to that deep some catch basin, we had to add an oil grit separator to get to a forty-four percent T S S removal. Uh before we discharge the water under the ground. Uh other utilities. And I'm gonna switch back to the um to the site plan uh that has the multiple sheets. Our utility plan. It just shows a little bit more detail on the stormwater management areas, our enclosed uh dumpster enclosure. Uh and for the proposed building, uh the the utility room um is gonna be uh over here in the front sort of front left corner. Uh where we will be bringing in our water, uh sewer, gas, and electric uh into that portion of the building. Uh the uh Wakefield Municipal Gas Light Department has already reached out to us, uh Mr. Paulson uh for uh gas. To uh start reviewing our architecturals for uh figuring out uh what size gas service we will uh we will require. And then uh Mr. Vison McMahon has also reached out to us uh to help us size the transformer. Uh and uh the way we're envisioning that as the plan progresses is we we'd love to place the transform pad. Uh somewhere towards the front of the property uh of that happens to be very close to a to a utility pole, the the property corner here. Uh but that's gonna be something that we'll need to figure out as we move forward. Uh I thought I heard uh during the six ten presentation that um that Mr. Reynolds has issued a a review letter. We haven't gotten a chance to see it yet. Uh I'm sure there'll be some back and forth um uh with Mr. Reynolds on on uh the site plan.
Yeah, and Gil sent that to me tonight, so I'll share that with you, Chris.
Okay, uh Brian, that's the end of my formal presentation on on civil site. Um if I'll turn it back to you and uh we can move on to someone else.
Yep, that'd be great.
Just a quick question. You guys are talking about gas. I thought that was a moratorium.
A moratorium on uh on connecting to uh natural gas in the town of Wakefield?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm not familiar with that, Mr. Mr. Tarbell, but uh but I know that um Mr. Paulson did reach out to us. Um is it uh could it be that uh where this property already has service that we have the right to um continue to receive service?
You you'd have to find that out, but I know we've had other projects that have had to go to electric heat. Because there wasn't enough gas available.
Okay, well, we'll make sure to ask that question.
Yeah, we'll we'll vet that. Um I I uh Mr. Tabell, it's a good point in in, you know, I don't know what communication Dave Paulson have, but have. But usually, Chris, they they've just talked about that they don't want new connections um to multifamilies with gas, so. But but Dave.
Nine months ago.
Yeah, Dave Paulson might, because a lot of times if 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 they're already connected and it's not a new connection, they'll allow it. So um we can vet that with Dave Paulson. At the W G L D. So um i- if I may, Mr. Chair, I'd like uh Jeff from uh Phoenix to kind of match up the architectural plan to the site plan. Jeff, can you take the screen? Do you want me to help you out?
Not I I gotta pull it up. Just give me one second.
Yeah, take your time.
For the record, this is Jeff Hager with Phoenix Architects. Thank you to the board and the chairman for your time. So we'll we'll go over our process in this design. We started working with Chris um siding the buildings. Some of the reasons were based on parking as he was alluding to and also distance to the stoplight. Um but uh another reason for the the building being situated this way is to screen Salem Street. From visually the highway as well from a noise aspect. Um ano- another thing this does is allowing for parking in the back, so you you create this street facade. So as you're coming down Salem Street. Um you're not seeing parking in front of the building, so fr- from a siding perspective, those were some of the reasons on the architectural side. We we started with that direction. Um ano- another thing we noticed doing our site analysis was just the context is in, so. Starting to look at some of the surrounding bi- buildings materiality. So you notice for that reason, we started to incorporate brick into our design to relate to the neighboring commercial buildings. Um. Given the use of this building, since it's residential, we wanted to have a more traditional feel. So that's why we started to incorporate traditional bays, hardy plank siding. Um a more traditional cornice detail to give it a more residential feel, um even though it's in a more commercial context. So so as uh Brian was presenting earlier, we we ended up with a twenty-two unit building. That's two two-bedroom residential, one one-bedroom and one office space. It's twenty-three thousand square feet total. Um basement plan is pretty minimal, mostly slab except for a small utility room in the front left corner. As you enter the building, we created this public space, so that's where where the office unit is, so that there'll be a leasing office. Um as as well as um a conference room, things like that, as mailroom as you're coming in. Then we get to the fourth floor, we started to create a more penthouse. Style plan, so if if you look, we're stepping back nine feet from the front of the building. We're really trying to reduce the massing. So so once again, this this penthouse level changes in materiality as well as um footprint. So it steps back nine feet from the front of the building, and then you switch to an aluminum panel siding to really disguise it, so you don't see it visually. As much and it it doesn't take away from the the main mass of the building. Um we're also using balconies to break up that box and create different sections, so there's there's three different masses that. Visually catch your eye instead of one big large structure. That that that's about it from the architectural side. You guys have any questions for me?
I guess one of my questions or concerns, and now as Salem Street is starting to get built out. And I don't know who to put this, Brian, I'll point this to you, cuz I don't know who to put this burden on. Uh but since Phoenix has presented two of the three projects that are new to this area. Uh from a massing standpoint, I'm not so concerned about massing. I'm more concerned about what the street ends up looking like. You know, office building, residential, office building, residential. You know, wh- when we take Google Earth and we start coming down Salem Street. What is it all ultimately get put together as and and what does it ultimately look like? And I don't know who needs to own that burden, so I turn to you and. Kind of would like to get your thoughts on that.
Yeah, I mean, the way we saw it is is sort of an opportunity. I mean, I I think a lot of the buildings that are neighboring have have a. Sort of antiquated site planning look to them where where they try to set the building back, so it's not imposing on the street. But the the issue, in my opinion, is then you're seeing parking up front and it's it's not as aesthetically pleasing. So for for me, I'd rather have the building um closer to the road, especially in this situation where the back of the lot looks upon the highway. Um so it is giving it a more. A more defined streetscape on this lot, and I think that's the direction, on- once again, in my opinion, to head as we develop these sites.
Yeah, I think, Chip, to your larger question, I did. I think some of this goes back to that master plan and the different parts of town that. The town planner at that time and others had a vision for different areas.
Oh, I I have no problem with it becoming this.
Okay.
What I what my issue is, is how does it all fit in and how does it look? As we start developing all these individual packs. I have no problem with being housing or next to an office or whatever. That's what people wanna do, but you know, as we were talking earlier at six ten. Well, what does it look like when we drive down from Wakefield? You know, we had the perspective of um. What's it like coming in from Lynn Field, but I have even a bigger question. Of what does this look like when we have these three new projects within this less than a mile space? What does it look like? Right? Does this fit with the context of the rest of the road? And not just pictures like Hayes did, but you know, when you go to. If we project out three years to Google Earth, you know, what are we looking at when we drive down here? And so, Mr. McGrail, I I turn to you and say, who can help us with this and who can? You know, who, who owns that burden if we ask that question?
Well, I think, um, c- can I have the, um, screen for a minute? Uh, Jeff, can you release it?
Yep.
I think we talked a little about this when, um, when, when the, uh, five-eighty-one was done. And, you know, what was discussed is, and I think Mr. McBane brought it up, that. You know, you, this is you're coming into Wakefield and, you know, basically what you have right now is you've got a mess with this, a- and this is kind of that mess.
But I'm not disagreeing with.
No, but, but what we talked about was that, that, and Jim mentioned this, that except for this property, which is not, would be fixed. On the right-hand side, you have just a mess. Um, it's a mixed mash. I mean, you've got, you've got some nice buildings. You've got the Hayes building as you come into town, which is Jeff said is set back and, you know, has that parking in the front, which, you know, probably today wouldn't be preferable. And then. You've got, then you got, you've got this house, which is, you know, kind of in the business district, but then you run into. What is? Now going to be developed into the.
Right, so how do we, how do we fix what's being developed there into this?
I mean, I think what you might, you know, I think the, the, what's being done here would be an architectural consideration of what's being done further up the road. But you're going to have sidewalk connections. I mean, are you talking about architectural sinking of the buildings, Mr. Tabell? Is that what you're talking?
Kind of trying to get a feel for, you know, as you do this two years from now or three years from now. What's it going to look like?
And that's the building that's next door. That's a five-forty-five that's, that would be next door to this building.
Correct.
Yeah.
Oh, so I, I, I hear you, and maybe. Mr. McBane can help me a little bit with, how do you do this, Jim? How do you add three new? Projects onto the streetscape, so we know what we're going to end up with.
Well, I think, I, I think what you do now, what you're doing now, basically, depending on decisions being made. Is these others, these others basically going to morph into something very similar. Because it's gonna, it's, i- if you, if you look down the street now, what particularly in Lynn Field, basically. If you've got businesses down there and you've got housing on this side and businesses in between, basic, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna morph into the same thing. Some of the stuff that's on the other side, that's a converted house, basically, or, or a smaller building is going to be too. Um, you know, too much value, basically, and it's going to be converted into something else, whether it be an office space or housing. It's going to happen on this whole street and people are going to look and say, see what's already on the street. What has recently, uh, come to the street and some of those dead zones, so to speak, will, will get bought up. And converted into something different, even to, even to the possibility that, that some of the office space could be converted into a bigger office space. Because they pick up land next door. But, you know, it's, it's. Y- y- you could imagine, basically, if you lived on the street and you worked down the street, it would be nice. You just drive down the street or walk down the street. Be a business, basically.
Architecturally, do we care that each one of these projects is being developed on its own? Eclectically, I guess I would say. Context to the others.
Yeah, no, we haven't, I mean, we haven't got a historic zone where we, where we got, you know, standards, basically. We, we haven't got that authority, nor does the planning board have that authority at this point. The best we can do is say, you know, we'd like office or we'd like, um, housing or something like that, basically, which is already. In the master plan for the town. So, y- you know, you, you're not setting standards, not like you're, uh, doing a development, everything's the same. I think having variety here basically is, is better, quite frankly.
Okay.
Yeah, but a lot of urban areas have, they just layer extra regulatory layers on, so you have design guidelines. It doesn't mean that all the architecture has to be the same, but, you know, it's open space, it's. You know, setbacks, you know, making sure that the right curb and sidewalks are installed. It's all that.
Yeah.
To Jim's standard, it's most standardized.
And we still have special permit authority, so it, it, I mean, it kind of falls on us in, in this type of use.
Right, well, yeah, we can, we can, we can ha- we can mold it to a certain degree and.
Yeah.
As we've done, basically, in these, you know, I, I think one of them recently, we said, well, they, well, I think it was one of the projects here. Well, we don't think we need a sidewalk. Well, no, you're going to get a sidewalk. We're going to have sidewalks up and down the street. We did it over on North Avenue, too.
This whole, this whole street is going to become much more walkable.
Yes.
And it's going to get connected to walking to Market Street. Um, it's going to happen, because you get around that corner, you can walk right up the street to Market Street.
I'm less, I'm less concerned, um, basically at this point, that there is, there is a character to it. That's somewhat similar, but not the same at the same time.
Okay.
You know, will have an effect, it will have a rolling effect down the street over time. And as long as this board basically maintains a similar thinking, basically. Because not all of us are going to be here sometime in the future, is we can still have some molding authority over the whole thing.
Jeff, you want to go back to your, uh, elevation of the building? If I could ask the board your thoughts on, on the building design, just.
Well, first off, when I look at the grading, there's about six feet difference between the street and the sidewalk. It's in front of it, so I'd like to see some real character into what happens along that banking. From the sidewalk, from sidewalk to sidewalk, because th- there is six feet differential there, or four feet differential, I guess.
And this isn't showing that.
This is dead flat.
Unless they're making it dead flat.
No, not by the, not what they submitted.
What's the story with that, uh, Chris?
Yes, there is a grade difference, um, as, um, as Jim mentioned, uh, across the front of the property. Uh, from the lower sidewalk, which is the sidewalk that would be right along the street to the upper sidewalk. Uh, we have a grade difference of, um, just about four feet.
Yeah, yeah, we, we can update the rendering in the next go-around to reflect that.
I, uh, the other thing is, um, you know, you can't, it's, it's like the other building. We can't see the side of this one.
Yep.
Seeing the front. So we want, we, and, you know, I'd like, I don't know whether it's any more than just a rendering here in this package. It shows us something about the surround of this building. But I'd like to see the other sides, obviously. Um, as to what they look like.
Yes, we do have elevations. We, we can do si- similar to six-ten and start to, um. Give you guys different views and different renderings to achieve a better idea.
What's up with the, uh, first floor? It shows like just a slab on grade with no walls or is that, is that a basement plan?
Slab on grade until the, the utility room.
Are you guys keeping any of the stone walls that I saw on the site civil?
So I can, uh, I can speak to that. Uh, we might have an opportunity, uh, to use some of those stones, uh, left and right of the building. Uh, we have a little bit of a grade change between our property and the abutting properties, maybe one to two. No more than three feet and, um, we show some short retaining walls. Uh, we might have a nice opportunity to try to use some of that stone.
Okay.
Is there any possibility of pulling that building a little bit further away, a few more feet? Or are you losing too much, uh, driveling?
So, uh.
Site plan, Chris, can you give, um, him back the site plan? Um, Jeff, release it.
Sure, let me, uh, let me bring that back.
Would just be helpful for the board to see it.
Sure. So this is our, uh, this is our utility plan. Let me, uh, go down one to the, to the layout plan. You can see, uh, some of the relative distances. One of the things that we were trying to do, um, i- in the back of the building is to create some green space. And, uh, and allow for the sidewalk, uh, before the, the parking, the parking field and. And we're a little bit tight to the back of the property here. Uh, and so if we push the building back, we may, we would have to give up some, either some green space or reduce the width of the driving lane from twenty-four feet. To something less than twenty-four.
We don't like to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
So, so that space that's in the back between the back parking area to the, to the fence line, I guess, there's a. There's a green strip in there?
There is, let me, um.
What happens there?
So that's, uh, that's, that's our primary snow storage area on site. Uh, and, um, we don't need to pave it or do anything with it, so we wanted to try to keep that open, um, for at least some snow storage. It's relatively flat in here.
And by comparison, I, I pulled up the five-eighty-one, which is again, going to be a couple of properties down it. That one looks a little closer to the street. You know, rectangular building, a little closer to the street than this. I don't have my slide rule out, Jim, but.
Well, I, I know it is, it is, it is, Dave.
Yeah. It seems further back than the other one, similar orientation, but further back, a little bit from the street, yeah.
Then, um, the, uh, the next project over, basically, um, has some trees, but. I mean, when you look at this, pull back out for a minute. So when you look at the two parking lots from the two projects. They're nose to nose, so what's, what's going to happen is you're going to have this big asphalt area there between the two buildings. Because it's going to be parking on either, parking on either side of that, the mi- uh, of the property line. And then, and then this little strip of planting, um, and, uh, traffic lanes and then the two buildings. So it's going to be, it's going to be a fairly large gap in there. It's not going to be that pleasant. In appearance. And I agree with what they said, basically, pull our entry park, entry, basically, and a parking further away from the parking lot, further from the stop lane, basically. Um, and it makes sense, but I, I think we need to look at both projects. Um, side by side to see how they interface with one another.
But next door is not a project, it's, it's. There's a building in between them.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. I was thinking we're, I was thinking we're closer than that. So we got some substantial, we have substantial trees there.
So can you, uh, can you see the, this plan that I just brought up, which is a, an aerial image?
Yeah.
Blow it up, Chris.
Yeah.
Sure.
Blow it up.
Not as bad as I thought it was.
And it's kind of a mirror from five-eighty-one, which is similar orientation with the driveways on the left side of the building. This one's on the right.
Yeah.
Which makes sense to pull it further away from the intersection, but, uh.
Absolutely.
But again, they're not cookie cutter, different color schemes already and materials for some, a little different, but. But I think we're going to find ourselves looking at both. One that's approved and one that we're now starting to hear about, so. To, to your point, Chip, I think it's important we do that. Just mindful of how they all play off each other, not the same color, not the same design, but. Are they? Yeah. Playing well together when, when.
Of these two, do we, you know what the height of the office buildings on either side of this are?
Yeah. Um, I can probably pull that, hold on, Chip. Was that on the, on the plan from, um, six-ten?
I believe it was.
Was it?
Let me pull it up.
Yep, he, uh, John had, um, identified these two properties, I believe.
All the way down here?
I can pull it up. Hang on.
It's going to be around thirty-five feet, both of them.
Yeah, five-forty-five is thirty-six, it says, yeah. Here it comes. Five-forty-five is right here. It's, uh, thirty-six feet, Chip.
They're going to be about the same height, both of them.
And the one on the other side that's on the corner, basically, doing, how many times you drive by it?
On the corner, right?
You time my pleasure, Ryan Road, um, Dave.
Yeah.
Hang on, I can at least give you.
And what's the projected height of your project?
I think it's forty-seven feet. But that, don't forget it stepped back.
And up to grade.
Yeah. Are you, are you trying to bring up something, Brian? Yeah, I wanted to. Okay. Just give you an idea of. Um, what the property next door is like.
Three stories, no, two.
Dude, that's what I was thinking.
Yeah, I wanted you, I wanted you to see that.
It's going to be about twenty-five.
There you go.
And this project is forty-seven?
Yeah, let me double check that. I, I checked on that today and I'm pretty sure that's what it is, hang on.
That's correct, Brian.
Is that right? Yeah.
Yep.
The twice as tall as this building, probably.
It's thirty-eight to the top of the third story, that main box on the front facade, so.
Okay. Again, this is our introduction meeting, so we don't have to go too deep with it.
No.
Folks, folks need to digest what we're hearing and we can certainly, we usually start with the architectural massing. In a little more detail in a subsequent hearing, so.
Yeah.
I mean, was there any other areas you just wanted to give an initial presentation about?
No, I mean, I, I think you, I think you got a pretty good one on traffic already, um, and we'll get on the agenda for the traffic advisory committee on this.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, you know, this is usually what we do at your first hearing to give you an idea of, um. Plan as a whole.
Okay.
When you're coming, when you're coming on landscape, can you just show us what trees will be staying, which ones are going?
Yeah. Chris, do you happen to have the landscape plan?
I do not.
We'll get into it, yeah. You don't want to get into it tonight anyways, I would assume.
Yeah.
Mr. Lucy, that was, uh, that was you right asking that question?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else, board members? Now. Okay, so next time we'll go a little bit further into the architectural and. Design. Site civil. Yeah. Site civil, do we want to do that, too? That's usually where we start.
Like, I'd like to see some massing. The two-story art building that's project, the one to the right. What, what's, what are the heights of the three worlds? And, you know, some sort of. Block diagram or something. As compared to those pictures.
And hopefully a lot of the trees, some of which appear to be substantial.
Yeah.
Part of that, right, that hopefully.
Understand what's coming and what's going.
Without getting into all the landscaping, but yes, the visual, okay, yeah. All right. That's doable. Next time, again, we have one meeting, so it's a few weeks out. Okay. Chris, is that something you can work on with, uh, Jeff?
Absolutely, uh, we can, uh, I, you know, I, I, I don't want anyone to be disappointed, um, much of the site is being disturbed. Uh, so most of the trees are coming down, uh, but we'll identify the ones that are coming down and, and what we're going to replace them with. And, um. And we'll also have a chance to review, uh, uh, Mr. Reynolds' route, letter, so we can report on, uh, on how we're going to change the plan to address those comments as well.
And some massing stuff.
Yes, we can, uh, we'll work together with Jeff's office to, uh, to, to work that stuff out.
Okay, perfect.
Hey, Chris, you mentioned, uh, putting the transfer on the front. Is there a way to put that transformer in the back? Do you look at that?
So we have options, um, it's, uh, it's always nice to be very close to the utility poles, you're not running a lot of, right around, um, underground cable.
Yeah.
But, but we'll look at the back as well.
All right, thank you.
Boken by a true. Welcome by a true engineer.
Okay, anything else, board members? For tonight?
No.
Okay. As we usually do, I don't see too many members of the public left, but again, when entertain any public comment at this time. Again, at a general level about the project, what we've heard tonight, we're going to get into details at future meetings. There'll be other opportunities, but at this time, is there anyone who wishes to ask a general question or comment about the project? Please raise your hands. Give it a second, I don't see any hands going up yet. Again, there'll be other opportunities as we get into the other aspects of the project and future meetings. Seeing no hands at this time, we'll close at the public desk twenty for the evening, so back to the board, I think we have our punch list for next time. December sixteenth. Someone want to make a motion?
Oh, you ready for that?
Yep.
Sorry. I move that we continue this to December sixteenth.
Second.
Any discussion? All favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I say yes, okay, thank you, gentlemen, for the initial presentation, we'll see you in a few weeks and. Move on to other aspects of the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving to you. You too, happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Be well, be safe. Okay. So that concludes the hearings we have to schedule this evening, we have one other matter. And fourteen four fourteen Main Street Smartlink Group on behalf of AT&amp;T requesting an administrative review approval.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Ryan Lynch, on behalf of Smartlink Group representing AT&amp;T.
Welcome.
Thank you, and. Basically, AT&amp;T is proposing currently to upgrade its facility at the four fourteen Main Street Building in Wakefield Center. Currently, we house nine antennas in our two enclosures on top of that building. We're looking to replace three of those antennas with three new panel antennas. We're also looking to replace nine of the remote radio units with six remote radio units for a net reduction in equipment on the site. We are also going to be essentially keeping all within the existing enclosure, so there'll be no visual impact to the facility or to the ground below. It'll all be within those existing fiberglass enclosures that are on the building that are matched in the brick facade that is there currently. I'm here tonight to answer any questions that the board may have.
Board members?
Nothing for me.
Is this like the third month in a row? No, this particular site, it's getting an upgrade, Mr. Lynch. We've had a couple of different. Different contractors or vendors in here.
I think AT&amp;T was just finished their last build earlier this spring or last this last summer.
Okay.
I think it was T-Mobile that came in front of us, Mr. Chairman, last time.
Yeah.
Same same building.
Yeah.
It's a busy time in our industry.
Yeah, five G, five G. Okay. Again, seems pretty straightforward. Not hearing any comments, questions, board members?
From the public, or this doesn't even go to the public, does it?
Not really, just it meets the criteria, it's an administrative finding.
Okay. I move that we find that the modifications that the. At four fourteen Main Street have met the criteria. For a administrative for the administrative review and approval. Because after we reviewed the correspondence plans and materials provided by the applicant. Representative, the board found that the replacement of the antennas. And addition of the new antennas, as well as the replacement of the remote radio heads. All staying within the current enclosure on the top of the building. Meet the requirements. For an administrative approval. Under forty seven USC. One, four, five, five, A.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? All right, go regular voting members on this one, Chip.
Hi.
Amy?
Yes.
Jim?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
And I vote yes, okay, so that is unanimous, I've got. The letters that we need signed, I've got three copies, I have just signed them. So you need at least, you need one from Gail, so, yeah, I can get you this file tomorrow and you can make arrangements to. Contact her at Town Hall. To get the copy you need and then you can proceed with what you need to do, right?
Very good.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, thanks for your patience tonight. Happened to be last on the agenda, but.
It's okay, not a problem, it was an interesting hearing.
We get that a lot. All right, thank you, and happy Thanksgiving to you, too.
You, too, thank you.
Take care. Okay. Item five clerk or board comments, any updates, topics, questions?
I have a question. This is going to go back a little ways, the building that we did. Or it was already the existing building down in Greenwood across from. I don't know. That it was like they were doing where the paint store was. Remember, and they were doing, it was basically like a housing thing for. Like furniture, whatever people staging properties, did they, I feel like I remember something about them not wanting signage. Because they didn't need a sign on the wall, they didn't need any anything, because it was just going to be where they stored stuff, does that ring a bell to anybody?
Vaguely.
Okay, well, because I drive by it every day and I noticed there's a sign out on the street and I didn't know, I couldn't remember if we had approved that or if that's gone up since then.
Jim?
Oh, you know, there's, there's been nothing through. Design Review Board, and I believe you're right, they were not in assigned at the time.
Yeah. Because I remember they wanted just the number on the building.
Is that in the district?
Yes.
But I don't remember, I remember reviewing the project, I just don't remember us contemplating signage or what they had thought about at that time.
Three years ago now.
I know, I just remember it was like a thing, because we were like, you sure you don't want a name on something or and they all they wanted was the street number. On the building, but I can't recall, I don't believe that we did anything with an actual sign on the street, but there's one there now.
Well, it's not the first one that I've that have popped up, so. I'm about ready to go and do a bunch of photographing, basically, and then talk to Joe about. What we do about some of these guys, because they're not pulling permits either, they're just, they're just putting signs up, basically.
Put them on your list.
Oh, no, don't worry about it. Two other things, actually, three other things. Chip and I went to two ninety one Salem Street, which is those two. A single lot with two houses on it. And there are several conditions there, basically, that have shown up. Like they put, they had a partial retaining wall going in as part of the plan, now they put a full retaining wall, or should I say just loaded a bunch of boulders in the back of the lot. And raised the grade. And it's not following basically what the drainage. System was supposed to be back there as as well, so. And they're missing some trees, so they had asked Gail to have us go out and look at it. And it's not appropriate at this point, they haven't done a proper job, and they're also supposed to do. A record drawing, basically, as to the civil grading out there as well, and we haven't seen that, so. And the owner originally was going to live in the back of the lot, I guess he's selling it to somebody else at this point.
Yeah, they're both on the market, I saw that, actually.
Yeah, so.
Did you get capture these in writing so that they maybe we can?
I think what Chip and I, we left town meeting and we just drove over there and sort of was eyeballing it. And I came back and got a bunch of material, basically, sent it off to Chip, so I think the two of us got to go over there and do another walk around now with a set of drawings in our hand, basically.
And maybe with them there and point out the things and.
Yeah.
Pointed them out to him and even forwarded your email to him, and he's working on the as built now and said he he'll talk to you about that wall and.
He can talk all he want.
Right, I'm just telling you, he knows.
Bring an excavator in. The other thing was, we went down to thirty seven Water Street. Check the planting out down there, it's a little remiss. Doesn't seem like the lilies are in if they can even find them. And the it doesn't appear as though the. The sprinkler system's in place or drip system. And there's a bunch of plants that have been either yanked. By a passerby or they're dead, so they were pulled out of the boxes out front, so, and we still don't have anything from the fire department, and we don't have. A layout from certified engineer, basically, as well, so.
We were told, was the last email we got, Gail said they're working on it, Phoenix, or?
Um, yeah.
Pinocchio, yeah.
Yeah.
And I.
I don't know why it takes so long, I mean, it should have been done by now.
And we want, we want that drawing to be signed off to the fire department, just like it did originally, basically.
Correct.
Then.
And then there's curving work along Water Street that still needs to get done up by the omelet factory, the moving of that entrance. Et cetera, et cetera, I mean, it's, yes. He got a temporary occupancy some. Somehow the beginning of the winter for some of the units, so. He's got people living here now.
Yeah, there's four units in number thirty seven, there was a state agency involved and the state inspector was involved in that, so that's why.
And he doesn't do it for everything.
No.
And then I've I've sent a note to through Gail to Joe, basically, about the signage, the potential signage coming for the. Railroad station, because they painted over his, the barber shop sign, so you can guarantee he's going to go up there with a paintbrush and. Put something on the wall, so I think we need to basically send a message to him, he's got to pull a permit, he's got to go through the process.
Yep.
And I know Jack dealt with them unsuccessfully, basically. And then finally, finally, I'm working on a. A three D program of Salem Street in these three projects and the surrounding buildings. So that will give you a better insight, and you can move around it if you got the right software. Basically, to see what the impact of these buildings are on the streets, on the buildings that are there. Might help.
Okay. Can't wait to see it.
Jim, any word on Lowell Street there at Four Corners, I saw them digging the other day.
You know, no, I I I went by there and there were three excavators there, I think they parked them in there, but you know, what happened was about two years ago. They were swinging an excavator around in there and they chopped the telephone pole right off.
Okay.
Well, I think what they're doing, because it was utility company in the street, I think they're working on a telephone pole.
Yeah, they're putting some conduit in the ground, I think, just conduit and some string.
Okay.
They said they had to move the telephone pole, they're getting ready to come to the. Came in like two days ago, the owner, CJ, already.
They put some fresh bill there and I think they just topped it off.
Yeah, and they have to move that pole. But they're coming back to the board, they're in the middle of filing.
Good. I mean, we go through that, I go through that site all the time, too. Just it's like an eyesore, they just got to do something, right?
Yeah.
All right, good, we'll be looking forward to that, anything else, board members?
What was the date of our last meeting?
Yeah, October twenty eighth.
I move that we approve the minutes of October twenty eighth.
I'm not going to second it, because I wasn't there.
I think it's the twenty third, is it, is it twenty third or the twenty eighth?
The twenty eighth.
Oh, is it?
Twenty third is a Friday.
Yeah, and seconded, any discussion? Greg?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Chip?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I vote I, all right, good job again, Gail.
I move that we.
Second.
Any discussion? Once again, Greg?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Chip?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Mike?
Hi.
And I vote I, we are in adjournment.
I don't get to adjourn.
Oh, sorry, Amy, you can adjourn, sorry, you were wrapped in a blanket.
You are already adjourned, wrapped in your blanket.
Wait a minute, you're in your old house, own house, what are you cold for, you were, she was sitting at Town Hall and halfway through that, she's wrapped herself up, basically.
It was cold, leave me alone.
All right. Happy Thanksgiving.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.